Morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock at City Hall, and we always, for the best of our ability, are on time. And so for those of you who are having a good time in the back on TV or whatever you're doing back there, we're going to start. The January 21st, 2015 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-spray-and-sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers. Out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal, fire official, for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation in public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see our city clerk up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Chaplain Steve Sanson of the Veterans in Politics International, followed by our Pledge of Legions?
God of all creation, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. We thank you for the people with whom we have been in contact, our family, friends, and strangers. We thank you for the ability to use our minds to discern your will and work to create a strong and healthy city. We thank you for our city and all who serve it, for those who teach and those who protect, for those who clean and those who repair, for those who work in parks and those who work on roads, for those who plan and those who make the plans happen, for those who heal and those who counsel, for those who govern and those who elect, for all who live into the best example of what it means to be a citizen. We thank you for our city. We pray for all in our city who are hungry, unemployed, or uninsured. We pray for all in our city who are mentally or physically ill. We pray for all in our city who live in violence. For these and all the burdens of our larger community, Lord, hear our prayers. At this meeting, as this meeting begins this morning, I pray for each person here. Give each person clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and a sense of humor. Give them listening ears and thoughtful words. Give them presence of mind and an open heart. And all God's people said, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, and to the nation in which it is founded, with its full liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will proceed now with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. Four, five. Okay, I'm looking. I'm missing one guy. Oh, here he comes. Lone Ranger. It's all right. You've got to bounce in your step. Okay. Oh. You've had a big weekend, haven't you, Councilman Barlow? Big weekend. Opening historic, soft opening, and the parade, and then Edmund Center. Big deal. Yes, it was great. Okay, everyone, our first item. Oh, my. I'd like to invite our city attorney Brad Jerbik to join us at the podium, please. Our employees, as you know, strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community to make life better for us all, and I'm proud to announce that the employee of the month is Betsy Kamela. Where are you, Betsy? Where are you? Okay. I got a hand. There she was. Oh, and she's prepared. I can tell. This woman is always prepared. All right, for everyone, Betsy is a legal assistant, too, in the city attorney's office and has been with the city since 2005. Betsy is an extremely hard worker, and though the public at large may not know who she is, she's an integral part of getting important information to them. Betsy has served as the point of contact in the city attorney's office for public records requests. Oh, my. Oh, my in spades. Oh, my gosh, it's amazing that you're standing. Wait a minute, I've lost my spot here. I just got so taken with that. Betsy works closely with the city's Office of Communication to provide records and data requests that are sometimes thousands of pages long. One recent example was a request for the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Department that resulted in more than 1 million pieces of information that had been given to the media agency. Betsy examined the information to ensure that protected medical information of residents was not included while still ensuring that the information requested by the media outlet was included, all on a tight deadline. At the city of Las Vegas, we pride ourselves in being a transparent organization, providing accurate information quickly to the media and the public, and Betsy helps us do that. Through the city's transparent Las Vegas webpage, the broadcast of meetings like this one on KCLV Channel 2, our social media sites, and the city clerk's new online record search functions, we're working to communicate city information over myriad of formats. Betsy has ensured that we adhere to public record laws, and her work has led the city to being one of the most transparent public agencies in the state of Nevada. Betsy, we want to thank you for your strong work, your ethicacies, and your efficiency. You've been an outstanding employee throughout your career with us, and on behalf of the entire city council, it's a pleasure to name Betsy the employee of the month. And we congratulate you. And along with this award, she has received $100 Visa gift card, compliments of, thank you very much, the Clark County Credit Union, $100 gift card from Mundo Restaurant, and Betsy also has received various other awards from the city council to recognize her great work. Finally, to our left, you will see a street sign with Betsy's name on it that's posted in front of City Hall on Main Street. I think we should give her another month, however, because you can't get to the sign because of all the construction that we're all fighting, but anyway. We're very proud of you, and before, I think what I will do is give you this wonderful Employee of the Month award, which does exhibit for Betsy with outstanding performance through achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, ownership, and is engaged now. She has exhibited the huge amount of assistance to her fellow employees, the department and the citizens of Las Vegas. And I'm going to ask Mr. Jerbik to speak first, if that's all right, and then, of course, we'll turn the microphone over to you, Betsy. Congratulations from all of us. Mr. Jerbik, I know you're never at a loss for words. The mic's yours.
I might be this morning, but thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to acknowledge our staff is here today to also recognize you, Betsy. When Steve was doing the prayer, you touched on just about everything, and there are so many people in the city that every day do things that if we do it right, nobody out there knows that we're doing it, and Betsy is one of them. Every day, there are a million things that come through our office that need prompt attention and that need to be handled correctly, or there are consequences, and Betsy has been doing it unfailingly for over 10 years. The public records are just the tip of the iceberg. Every time I need somebody to go to, I go to Betsy, whether it's in the evening, or it's in the morning, or it's on the weekend. I can always get a hold of her, and she's always got the answer. So I want to tell you how much we appreciate you, how much the city appreciates you, how valuable you are, and you can never quit.
Thank you, Brad. All right, Betsy, why don't you, well, you are a petite lady, packaged well. You can see over here. Do come right up.
Thank you. And I'll hold this for you in case you'd written something.
Oh, thanks. Wow, how do I follow up on that? Thank you, everybody. Good morning. I just wanted to say I'm honored to be part of this organization, you know, employed as a paralegal with the city attorney's office. I owe some thank yous to so many people, but I wanted to specifically mention Jace Radke for the nomination. I really appreciate it. Thank you to my wonderful boss, Brad Jerbik, and thank you to my great colleagues and coworkers at the city attorney's office. I work with a terrific team of people, and I'm really a very lucky lady. And that's it. Thank you for this award. I'm really honored and very grateful.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Betsy. Congratulations. Let's have a picture. We're going to go over quickly for a picture, if that's all right, and then we'll come back and move on. And Jace, thank you very much for the nomination. Good morning. How are you all? Hi there. Okay, right here, you're in front, center. And where are you, David? Are you here? Jorge, not seeing David. Sorry. When might we see some relief so we can see Betsy's sign? August or September? This is January. What do we do? What do we do with Betsy's sign? Okay, thank you. Can we bay construction for six months? Good point. Okay. For our next item, we want to recognize the city's seniors of the quarter, and I'd like to invite Mary Ellen Heiss, our chairwoman of our Senior Citizen Advisory Board, to join us and make this exciting presentation. Hi, Mary Ellen. Thank you for what you're doing. What's the matter with your toe?
Bone on bone.
Say hello, and then you come right back, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm great.
What a great group of people. How lucky we are to have these people lead us in our city. We're very fortunate. Good morning, Mayor, city councilmen, city staff, and of course, our visitors. It is with great honor this morning I'm going to ask Fran Drury, who represents Councilman Coffin, Board Three, to please escort up our seniors of the quarter, Robert and Maria Hanson.
All right. The Senior Citizen Advisory Board has nominated Maria and Robert for their work with Metro Police Northeast Command as one of their many functions as volunteers in our community. The Hanson's respond to community alerts regarding safety issues and alerts in their immediate community, including missing person reports. They patrol the community, reporting problems of concerns to law enforcement, such as graffiti, abandoned vehicles, and vandalism. They paint over the graffiti, maintain our community pride, reducing costs to the city of Las Vegas with their volunteer hours of labor. They actively participate in the Neighborhood Watch Program as well. They volunteer in fundraising activities for senior and youth programs, drug awareness, youth basketball, and the Tootsie Roll Drive, which supports the disabled in our community. They volunteer with Mother Teresa Pantry by picking up food, repacking, and distributing the food to those in need. They serve in leadership roles in their church. Robert is currently the president of Sunrise Seniors Group, and those folks have joined us today, and we're very appreciative and welcome to the city. The council meeting, we're glad you also made it. Also, their friends came here from California, who they work with the Metro Police Department in California, so they're leaders in their community, and their friends are also leaders and supporters. The Hanson's have been married for 55 years. They are proud parents, yes, wow is right. And they're proud parents of four children and 10 grandchildren. Our board is honored to recognize both of you today as seniors of the quarter. You are a team who works together, supports each other, serving the needs of the lives of others in our community, and we welcome you and thank you for all that you do, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
I love your talk.
I don't have an awful lot to say except I thank you to all of those who I work with and who I support and who support us and the community. Because it's a partnership effort, none of us do what we do by ourselves, and of course, I wouldn't be able to do it if I didn't have the partner that I have, so it's a team effort all around. So I want to thank my Sunrise Seniors over there, because we do an awful lot of good with each other, and so I want to thank this group for the honor that they have bestowed upon us, and we very much appreciate it, and we thank you all very, very much.
We're proud of you. Does your bride get to say something?
I don't speak good English, but I said thank you to everyone who support us. We have been here for 11 years, and we live in Rancho in California for 43 years, and I met even here before, and now we are going in our 56 years of marriage. So I thank all everyone, and everyone have a nice day, and may God bless all of you.
All right, what's the trick of being married 55 years?
You trust each other, and they'll, especially the guy, they forget a lot of things, the wives.
May I tell you, I know that from experience, but congratulations, and I know I can count on my councilwoman here who's married longer. Yes, we can take a picture. Can we take a picture? Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. We appreciate it. That's taking the picture? Oh, wonderful.
So she knows her very good.
Beautiful. Till three square next, yes? Thank you for everything you're doing. Wonderful. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, is this correct? Where is Mr. Radke?
That's it.
One more item, correct? That's it? Wow, this is very rapid this morning. I don't like that. For our final item, Councilman Beers is going to recognize one of our city's great volunteer organizations. I think I know, because I see somebody in the audience, which is yours.
It is National Mentoring Month. If Molly Latham, the CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters of Southern Nevada, Athena Gould, Director of Programs, Susan Summers, FM Marketing and Public Relations, and Kyle Dunlap, who is the Community Relations Manager, would you all come down?
Good morning.
Congratulations and thank you.
The largest mentoring organization in Southern Nevada. These people have been matching caring adult mentors with children and teens here in Southern Nevada since 1973. Research shows that mentored children are 46% less likely to use illegal drugs, 52% less likely to skip school, and perhaps the most important of all, 75% more likely to graduate from high school. So if you would tell us a little bit more about what you do and how people out there can get involved if they would like.
Thank you so much for this honor. The city's an important partner. So many of the schools where we mentor are in the city, and we're glad to be here today. And most of all, we need mentors, caring adults who can spend just four to six hours a month with a child who will become one of your best friends ever and make a very profound difference in the life of that child. I often say our mentors are about 500 of the best people in town, so certainly, if you or any of your friends or family would like to join that coalition, we'd be happy to have you. Thank you very much for the recognition. Oh, please, mentervegas.com. Very simple. Mentervegas.com.
Thank you. Congratulations to you and to the organization, and I believe that, Councilman Beers, is that for them?
Yes. This is Big Brothers Big Sisters Day in Southern Nevada, in the city of Las Vegas. Here is the proclamation that says so. Congratulations.
Thank you. Do you need us all to smush together? Can we get a little closer in? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break to transition whatever technology we need to do, and so we will be starting at 9:30. Actually, it's seven minutes. need to do, and so we will be starting at 9:30. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We'll set the time at one minute. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Ten. This is for possible action. Any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item, Item Number 14, on the consent agenda report on the selection of permanent and temporary polling locations for early voting during the 2015 City of Las Vegas municipal elections. All wars, staff has asked that this be obeyed till February 4th, 2014, and that's my motion.
Thank you very much. 2015.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All right. Okay, there's a motion to obey. And please vote. And please post.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Prior to the motion, well, not the motion, but the calling of vote, what is the explanation behind the advance? I didn't get the...
Was it a staff request?
Was it staff or...?
Yes, staff request. Coffin would like us to take a look at adding a new polling location, the Fifth Street School. And that request was made just as of last night.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11. Items 11...
You have to post, Mayor.
Excuse me?
Post.
Oh, we didn't post?
In the council.
Sorry. And please post.
Okay.
Okay, I would imagine Councilman Coffin asked for it. He would probably be in favor of it, and here he is. Would you like to vote on this as the abeyance of Item 14? And since you're back in here...
Thank you.
And I'm assuming you're...
If I had the voting queue, let's see, apparently it's closed.
But you can advise our city clerk and add plus. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Items 11 through 42 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Please note a correction to Item Number 28. The item is located in Ward Three with Councilman Coffin, not in Ward One with Councilwoman Tarkanian, as indicated on the agenda. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 11 through 42, except for Item Number 14.
Thank you. There's a motion. Wait, sorry?
I'm sorry.
What are they surfing me back?
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor Prochem.
Excuse me, Councilman.
I inhaled some egg and...
Oh, too much egg?
Yeah, it's a bad substitute for air. 18 and 19 are important to Ward Three because, and the central core of the city, because of the sidewalk improvements, and I'd like very much to have them explained by staff. So if you could please add 18 and 19 to the list.
Okay, so can you correct that?
I just simply want, I don't want to obey it, though. I'm sorry.
No, you're just pulling them forward.
I just want to simply have it pulled for discussion.
Okay, we'll pull forward 18 and 19, and if you'll make that motion, please.
Okay, my motion will be to approve the consent agenda items 11 through 42, except for 14. That was obeyed, and 18 and 19 will hear separately. That's my motion.
Okay, so there's a motion. Please vote. And then please post. Motion carries. So we will now hear on Agenda Item 18, Mr. Bowers or Mr. Sorantes, 18 and 19.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. My name is David Bowers, Director of Public Works.
You were lucky you weren't here when I called on Mr. Sorantes to find out when the construction would stop on Main Street.
And sorry about that. You got the information needed on that, I assume?
Yes, unfortunately. Thank you.
We'll try to speed that up the best we can.
Thank you.
Of course. Item 18 is an item for the design services on several of our downtown street skate projects. As many of you are aware, what we're trying to do in the downtown area is make it more friendly for different modes of transportation, including pedestrians, bikes, put shade trees in for walking, and this is just those types of projects.
And if I may, could I read as it's listed under subject? For possible action to approve a ward of the First Street Amendment to Agreement Number 110161-TF, Prime Design Services Agreement for Downtown Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements on First Street, Garses Avenue, Sixth Street, Third Street, and Bridger Avenue, Department of Public Works Ward, recommended to VTN Nevada in the amount of $385,000 Road and Flood Capital Projects Fund. And obviously, this isn't Ward Three. Councilman Coffin.
So that's correct. That's the entire list of roadways. And as I mentioned, you know, what we're trying to do is the downtown street skate project renovation. We're trying to move this through the entire downtown core, and this is a good portion of those projects. VTN's been a very good consultant for us, and this is, like I said, an additional supplement to their contract to finish up these projects for us.
And could I ask, had that gone, that had gone out to bid, correct?
Yes, you know, some of these, like First Streets, have already been completed. So they're all in different statuses. Garses has been completed. Sixth Street is still moving forward. Third Street has not moved forward yet as well, but they're in the design phase. And then Bridger's under construction right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coffin, do you want to make the announcement?
Yeah, I think, I think these items deserve to be mentioned because they're landmark kind of things. These show how the city is trying to reverse the trend where the automobile was totally king downtown and pedestrians, you know, had to dodge. And so streets were made wider, you know, whenever they could. Land was taken, and trees were removed. Pedestrian access was narrowed, and we're trying to bring it back. We don't have any art here, but I just think it's important to know that I did start this program. It has been going on for a while, but it's critical now for the safety as well as the pleasant being in downtown. I think that people understand that it is now a place to walk, stroll, if you will. We're always used to, you know, driving everywhere and stopping and trying to be right close. Well, guess what? You can come to Downtown Park in any number of places and walk a few blocks, and it doesn't hurt, and there'll be something nice to walk on. And the bicyclists truly appreciate it because this is more and more the younger person's way to get to work, and we want them to be able to get there safely. So thank you, ma'am. I would now move for approval of Item 18.
Okay, there's a motion, please. We'll do 19 next. Agenda Item 18, there's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. And on to Agenda Item 19.
Madam...
Yes?
You are the mayor, yes. Okay. I, no, I just wanted to add, do you know about when you would, I just wanted to ask the question, do you know about when you would be doing 19, Item Number 19 in the Medical District, about when that would start?
This is, we're just getting ready to start design on this. This is to approve the design contract. So basically, after this is approved, it'll take about, I'd say, three weeks to have, you know, the consultant actually start the work. And then this project is going to be complicated, but I think they can finish it up maybe as quickly as six, possibly nine months. So that puts us about a year out to actually break ground. But we'll do everything we can to expedite that, and I'll stay in conversation with you.
It would be before the end of the year?
Yes, about that timeframe.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to read now this one. Yes, for possible action to approve a ward of Contract Number 150099-TF, Prime Design Services Contract for Sidewalk Infill, Medical District and Area 2B, with the Medical District being bounded by Charleston Avenue on the south, Alta Avenue on the north, Rancho Drive on the west, and Shadow Lane on the east, and Area 2B being bounded by Charleston Avenue on the south, US 95 on the north, Bruce Avenue on the west, Eastern Avenue on the east, Department of Public Works Award, recommended to Kim Lee Dashhorn and Associates, Inc., in the amount of $482,751 Road and Flood Capital Projects Fund. These are in Wards One and Three. Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Coffin, if you would, Mr. Bowers, tell us about those.
Sure. I believe this middle microphone's on, and there's an exhibit here to show you exactly what we're doing. The areas highlighted in green are the actual areas that are being designed with this contract approval. You can see the area to the left here is the Medical District within Councilwoman Tarkanian's area. And then on the, on the right-hand side is another area that we're designing adjacent to a previous area that was constructed, call this area the 2B. And that's bordered by US 95 on the north, eastern on the east, and then Charleston on the south, and Bruce to the west. And that's within Councilman Coffin's ward. Both these projects are a continuation of the sidewalk and...
Okay, yeah.
All right. Okay, there's a motion to obey. And please vote. And please post.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Prior to the mo- the motion, well, not the motion, but the calling of the vote. What is the explanation behind the advance? I didn't get the...
Was it a staff request?
It was a staff, or...
Yes, staff request. Coffin would like us to take a look at adding a new polling location, the Fifth Street School. And that request was made just as of last night.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11. Items 11...
You have to post, Mayor.
Excuse me?
Post.
Oh, we didn't post?
In the Councilman.
Sorry. And please post. Okay, I would imagine Councilman Coffin asked for it. He would probably be in favor of it. And here he is. Would you like to vote on this as the abeyance of Item 14? And since you're back in here...
Thank you.
And I'm assuming you're...
If I had the voting queue. Let's see, apparently it's closed.
But you can advise our city clerk and add plus. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Items 11 through 42 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Please note a correction to Item Number 28. The item is located in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin, not in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian as indicated on the agenda. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 11 through 42, except for Item Number 14.
Thank you. There's a motion. Wait, sorry?
I'm sorry.
What are they surfing me back?
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor Protem.
Excuse me, Councilman.
I inhaled some egg and...
Oh, too much egg?
Yeah, and I...
Okay.
It's a bad substitute for air. 18 and 19 are important to Ward 3 because, and the central core of the city, because of the sidewalk improvements. And I'd like very much to have them explained by staff. So if you could please add 18 and 19 to the list.
Okay, so...
Okay, I'm...
Can you correct that?
I just simply want, I don't want to obey it, though. I'm sorry.
No, you're just pulling them forward...
I just want to simply have it pulled for discussion.
Okay, we'll pull forward 18 and 19. And if you'll make that motion, please.
Okay, my motion will be to approve the consent agenda items 11 through 42, except for 14. That was abated, and we'll, and 18 and 19, we'll hear separately. That's my motion.
Okay, so there's a motion. Please vote. And then please post. Motion carries. So we will now hear on Agenda Item 18, Mr. Bowers or Mr. Sorantes, 18 and 19.
Good morning, Mayor and members of council. My name is David Bowers, Director of Public Works.
You were lucky you weren't here when I called on Mr. Sorantes to find out when the construction would stop on Main Street.
And sorry about that. And you got the information needed on that, I assume?
Yes, unfortunately. Thank you.
We'll try to speed that up the best we can.
Thank you.
Of course. Item 18 is an item for the design services on several of our downtown street skate projects. As many of you are aware, what we're trying to do in the downtown area is make it more friendly for different modes of transportation, including pedestrians, bikes, put shade trees in for walking. And this is just those types of projects.
And if I may, could I read as it's listed under subject for possible action to approve a ward of the First Street Amendment to Agreement Number 110161-TF, Prime Design Services Agreement for Downtown Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements on First Street, Garses Avenue, Sixth Street, Third Street, and Bridger Avenue, Department of Public Works Ward, Recommended to VTN Nevada in the amount of $308,000, $850,000 Road and Flood Capital Projects Fund. And obviously, this is Ward 3, Councilman Coffin.
So that's correct. That's the entire list of roadways. And as I mentioned, you know, what we're trying to do is the downtown street skate project renovation. We're trying to move this through the entire downtown core. And this is a good portion of those projects. VTN's been a very good consultant for us. And this is, like I said, an additional supplement to their contract to finish up these projects for us.
And could I ask, had that gone, that had gone out to bid, correct?
Yes. You know, some of these, like First Streets, have already been completed. So they're all in different statuses. Garses has been completed. Sixth Street is still moving forward. Third Street has not moved forward yet as well, but they're in the design phase. And then Bridger's under construction right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coffin, do you want to make the...
Yeah, I think, I think these, these items deserve to be mentioned because they're landmark kind of things. These show how the city is trying to reverse the trend where the automobile was totally king downtown and pedestrians, you know, had to dodge. And so streets were made wider, you know, whenever they could. Land was taken. And trees were removed. Pedestrian access was narrowed. And we're trying to bring it back. We don't have any art here, but I just think it's important to know that I did start this program. It has been going on for a while, but it's critical now for the safety as well as the pleasant being in downtown. I think that people understand that it is now a place to walk, stroll, if you will. And we're always used to, you know, driving everywhere and stopping and trying to be right close. Well, guess what? You can come to Downtown Park in any number of places and walk a few blocks, and it doesn't hurt, and there'll be something nice to walk on. And the bicyclists truly appreciate it because this is more and more of the younger person's way to get to work. And we want them to be able to get there safely. So thank you, ma'am. I would now move for approval of Item 18.
Okay, there's a motion, please. We'll do 19 next. Agenda Item 18, there's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. And on to Agenda Item 19.
Madam... You are the mayor, yes. Okay. I, no, I just wanted to add, do you know about when you would, I just wanted to ask the question, do you know about when you would be doing 19, Item Number 19 in the Medical District, about when that would start?
This is, we're just getting ready to start design on this. This is to approve the design contract. So basically, after this is approved, it'll take about, I'd say, three weeks to have, you know, the consultant actually start the work. And then this project is going to be complicated, but I think they can finish it up maybe as quickly as six, possibly nine months. So that puts us about a year out to actually break ground. But we'll do everything we can to expedite that, and I'll stay in conversation with you.
It would be before the end of the year?
Yes, about that timeframe.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to read now this one. Yes, for possible action to approve a ward of Contract Number 150099-TF, Prime Design Services Contract for Sidewalk Infill, Medical District and Area 2B, with the Medical District being bounded by Charleston Avenue on the south, Alta Avenue on the north, Rancho Drive on the west, and Shadow Lane on the east, and Area 2B being bounded by Charleston Avenue on the south, US 95 on the north, Bruce Avenue on the west, Eastern Avenue on the east, Department of Public Works Ward, Recommended to Kim Lee, Dashhorn, and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $482,751 Road and Flood Capital Projects Fund. These are in Wards 1 and 3. Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Coffin, if you would, Mr. Bowers, tell us about those.
Sure. I believe this middle microphone's on, and there's an exhibit here to show you exactly what we're doing. The areas highlighted in green are the actual areas that are being designed with this contract approval. You can see the area to the left here is the Medical District within Councilwoman Tarkanian's area. And then on the, on the right-hand side is another area that we're designing, adjacent to a previous area that was constructed, call this area the 2B. And that's bordered by US 95 on the north, Eastern on the east, and then Charleston on the south, and Bruce to the west. And that's within Councilman Coffin's ward. Both these projects are a continuation of the sidewalk improvement infill we've been doing for, for quite some time now.
Councilman?
I thought Councilwoman Tarkanian might take the lead, but I'll just add my two cents here. This is important to the east side of town because newcomers, and that could be anywhere from 30 years on, they're not aware that the east side of town was built helter-skelter. It was as people moved in, you built a development, and you just got approved, and you went away. And there wasn't much planning for things like livability, walkability, all the things that we think of now. So there are no sidewalks in many places. And the only way we get the money for sidewalks is through federal grants and things like that where this money is coming from, although it doesn't say that's where it's coming from. In fact, that's where it is. The city has not had enough money. Of course, it should be taking some money out of the gas tax, maybe, but that's another story. The point is, thank you, staff, for recognizing this as an underserved area for sidewalks and continuing the plan. And I know the same applies for Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward. Hers was built very early. These are all in the days before planned neighborhoods. And everybody that's come here in the last 30, 35 years needs to know that. Thank you.
And I was just going to add it for the west side of this. It's very important around the Medical District to be able to have a walkable community with the wider sidewalks and the safety issues. And I just wanted to ask, well, maybe sometime we could meet. I just wondered if there's a possibility, when you do some of these things, if we might consider some additional safety issues. And I'll talk with you the next time we meet.
Okay, that'd be great. We appreciate your input.
I just was at a meeting yesterday where it was mentioned, so I didn't have a chance to talk to you about it.
Sure, sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Appreciate it. Did we vote on that? Let's make a motion, please. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 19. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. And the reason I wasn't paying any attention, I see our next Agenda Item, very illustrious and important group to the city and to the entire area and the state. We have an administrative, this is Agenda Item 43, administrative report from Barbara Atkinson, Planning Dean for the proposed University in Nevada Las Vegas School of Medicine on plans and visions. This is in reference to all wards. And I see our wonderful former president, President, Community Leader, the initiator behind the Smith Center, Don Snyder. We thank you so much for everything that you do. I just can't tell you how important you have been to our community. We're so grateful. So, I think I know this gentleman. If you would, James Dean Levitt.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. You just introduced everybody. I was going to, but...
Do it again. We love it.
Thank you. I'm going to do it again. So with us, and first of all, thank you so much, yourself, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and frankly, everybody on the City Council for being such strong supporters of having a UNLV School of Medicine. Last Thursday night in Carson City was the absolute highlight of my life as a 10-year member of the board, when the governor announced in his executive budget funding for this historic venture that is going to benefit the citizens of Southern Nevada for hundreds of years to come. I couldn't be more proud and more excited to introduce everybody that's helped me make this possible, and certainly starting with Dean Barbara Atkinson, former dean of two prestigious medical schools, and now our own Planning Dean. Of course, we have former President Don Snyder in the office in the audience, current President Len Jessup. We have Marcia Turner, who is our Vice Chancellor and does everything health sciences. Her outstanding right-hand person, Lee Quick, who's the manager. And of course, we have Louis Valera, who's our Government Relations Assistant with, with the university. So I'm going to sit down and let you hear from the expert, but I thank you all for your service. This is, when this was announced by the governor, there was more applause from Southern Nevada legislatures than any other item. Now, the governor funded $9 million of our $26 million, but I am confident that our Southern Nevada delegation is going to, I don't know if they're going to add a zero to that number, but if they simply add 20 million to it, we're going to work on that. But anything all of you can do to help us add the dollars, because the way the governor's budget is laid out, it talks about an entering class in 2018, but that's not our plan. Our plan is 2017. The governor needs to know that. So he's on notice, and we're going to do everything we can because Dean Atkinson, in all of her work with the Liaison Committee on Medical Education, there are targeted deadlines that have to be reached. 2017 is that deadline. That's the goal, and we're going to make that happen with your assistance. So thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. And I would add, certainly, the city's staff and Councilwoman and I have been working since square one. You have our full support, and I'm pretty confident I can speak for the rest of the council, saying that we're just really excited, whatever we can do. We were disappointed in the number, but, you know, it's a first step. And I really believe with as we go, and Dr. Jessup, if you just, aren't you lucky to be going in at this time? Just fabulous. And so whatever we can do, please just, I don't mean to preempt your comments and response, but just to know, I know we're here, and certainly Councilwoman and I just will carry that banner, and hopefully the rest of council, too. So thank you, please.
And Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add that I was very glad to hear that the Southern legislators are going to continue to move for additional funding because we have to keep our eye on the economic impact. And we've helped other places, the state has, for, with additional funds. So we need to make sure that we get as much as we can here. And what was it? It was $1 billion over a period of 10 years, if the research has showed the economic impact will be. And I'll tell you, if you just help with that amount of money we're talking about now, that's a really good bargain.
It's actually $1 billion a year at the end.
Yes.
So it's really a huge economic impact, a lot of jobs, and a lot of momentum happening.
Absolutely. And that's what we've been doing for, the state has been doing for other projects, a couple of them up north. So we have to push hard here. Thank you very much. I was very pleased to hear that. We never quit, right?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not. I want to thank all of you for just inviting me to come and give you an update. And then I'm going to talk about the Medical District a little bit and the, and the land. And I, I have to thank everybody. I have to thank everybody back there. I won't go through their names again. But, but up here, Mayor, you have been outstanding. Councilwoman Tarkanian, unbelievable supportive. This is, Medical District is her district, but I don't think we'd have our memorandum of understanding with the county if it weren't for the work she and her team did, Betsy Fretwell did, Scott Adams did. And so many people have really helped make this happen.
It is, it's a community event. It really is. And an effort, we're with you 100%.
And I have to just say that I'm really actually pleased and, and really want to thank the governor, too, because this was only a year ago, December, this last December, that we even had people moving this project forward. It really was the report of the, out, the consultant that really started it, and it really was just over a year ago. So to have that come up in this governor's budget is really, I think, a major achievement. And I'm going full blast ahead because I think the more momentum and the more progress we can make, the faster we can get this going, the more people will recognize how important it is.
And if you wouldn't mind, because I just did announce to everybody, Doctor, would you say your name for our record, that you're the one that's making the report, please?
Yes, sure. I'm Dr. Barbara Atkinson. I'm the Planning Dean for the UNLV School of Medicine. And I want to say right up front, we have a school. The Regents have approved the school. It is an official school of UNLV. And now we even have a budget recommendation from the governor. So we're on our way. And I'll just go briefly through some of these slides and spend a little more time on some other ones. I think anybody who's lived in Las Vegas recognizes that there's a shortage of doctors.
Sorry. And we have a printout. This is very important information, just your first slide. Could we have a printout after?
Sure. Absolutely. You can print this. Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Definitely print this. I actually thought you did have it, but, sure. It is 46th in the number of doctors total. Psychiatrist, as we all know, one of the biggest needs in this city, absolutely the worst state in the country for number of psychiatrists. What I find particularly difficult is some patients absolutely have to leave Las Vegas for a liver transplant, for instance, or a bone marrow transplant. They're not done here. We have two liver transplant surgeons at UMC, but they just harvest livers and send them out, and the patients have to leave to get a transplant. Things like that shouldn't be happening in a city of 2 million people. And the governor pointed that out, that this is the largest city in the country that doesn't have a public medical school. So our plan is start the first class in 2017. We want to have a new medical education building, and that's the piece I'm going to be talking about with you because it's in your, your district. We want to increase the class size to 120 as soon as we have that building, but we'll build it for a class of 180. And I should say that the school, unsum, in Reno, has 70 students in a class. That's a very small class size, actually. In this country, there's, I think, only one or two smaller than that. 180 is more like the average, and so that's what we're going to be at, at a minimum. We're going to be recruiting 120 faculty as fast as we have the money to recruit them. It's really the cost that we put into the legislative budget, and the main cost of a medical school is all in the faculty. That's physicians coming to this city who are academic, who will teach medical students, they'll teach residents, they'll have a clinical practice taking care of people at the highest levels of specialization. We've organized partnerships with at least these hospitals, UMC, very close. We hope we can really build some programs at UMC that make money, that'll start to turn around the financial status. I'll talk about one of them in a minute, but we really do want to build programs that they can do there that they, that can't be done in other hospitals in this city. The VA is very exciting. To have a VA as excellent as this VA is, is amazing for this city. And we want to partner and, and have joint faculty recruitments with them, people who would be three eights at the, at the medical school, five eights at the VA, doing research, doing teaching of students, and doing clinical care of our veterans. They have research facilities that we want to work on joint programs and get some outside grant funding. Sunrise is another exciting partner for us, again, a very high-quality hospital. And the Dignity System is interested in working with us, especially to build residency programs, which they've not had up till now. So we're going to build research. We want to really have a whole academic health center that's the highest level specialization, that has research, education, and clinical care. We want our school to be very innovative, and that's been the most exciting thing for me. That's really why I came here, was to think about what doctors who are going to practice for 50, next 50 years are going to really need to know and how they need to learn it, and how we can do it better than it's been done. The nice thing about starting fresh is you can really think about those new ideas. So we think they need to really understand technology. We think they need to really understand problems and getting things out of the literature. But we think they really need to have good patient care. So an academic health center is the model that we're aiming for. It is a partnership model with the School of Medicine in the middle, the other health professions in the middle right with us, and all as part of an educational team, but then with the partners around it. Are there some places where hospitals are owned and there's a very tight ownership? We're a partnership model with all the different hospitals, with other kinds of outpatient facilities, the federally qualified health centers and research institutes. The Ruvo Institute is one of our, our best partners that we can do research with their clinical care and their clinical patients. So there's a lot we can do, and the public health has to also be a big partner because that's another thing a medical school can bring, is just betterment of, of the health of everybody. So the programs that are the key ones that we want to build, cardiology, mental health and addiction, biggest need in this city, neuroscience, cancer, and orthopedics. I came in May. I spent about the first four or five months meeting with everybody in the community, all kinds of different people, really coming up with what the needs were and what the best opportunities are. And these are all here for a variety of reasons, but there's already some core to most of them that's excellent in this town. But it needs to be expanded, the research needs to be built around it, and we need to build educational programs around it. So cardiology has some great cardiology practices here. The Pediatric Cardiology Group at Sunrise is just outstanding. Cardiology is excellent at the VA and at UMC. Mental health and addiction is, and cardiology, by the way, is one of the ones, the programs that makes money. So I'll say, there's, all of them here make money except for mental health and addiction. It's here not because it can make money, but because it's a need. Mental health and addiction, I think we have the opportunity to have one of the foremost programs in the country. It is something that other people don't concentrate on because it doesn't make money. It is something that's, that we can build research that's really innovative, that there's clinical trials of a lot of new drugs that are coming out. And I think there's a huge opportunity there. Neuroscience, working with Ruvo, again, taking their patient cohorts, they just take care of three kinds of patients. They take care of Parkinson's, multiple sclerosis, and Alzheimer's. And they, so they have a lot of patients in those categories that we can do the genome on. We can look for drugs that can be useful in those patients. We can do the basic research in those areas. And then there's the rest of neurology, stroke, epilepsy, ALS, all the other neurologic diseases. So those kind of partnerships are important. And cancer, dear to the mayor's heart and, and mine, I've built one NCI-designated cancer center at University of Kansas. And the remnants of the Nevada Cancer Institute are still in the city, and we need to just build on them and build the research and continue to grow it so that we can have our very own cancer center here. The big moneymaker, or maybe the first one we're going to work on with UMC, is orthopedics. So stay tuned for more on that score. So the principles for our school, first and foremost, students who are going to stay and practice as physicians in Nevada. We can intentionally look at who we take into the class, and we can intentionally look at what we need to do to keep them in, as residents here and then to stay on. We will do that. We need a very diverse student body. The accrediting agency looks at the population demographics and says that the student body should look like the population, the faculty should look like that, and the staff should look like that. And I'll tell you, the staff is the easiest one. The students may be the next easiest, and the faculty is very difficult to recruit, a very diverse faculty, but we'll be working on all aspects of all of that. Doctors for urban and rural practice both. It's important because this, even this Clark County is both urban and rural. So we'll be working specifically there. And we do plan on having a problem-based curriculum, but, but really concentrating on the classic communication skills, history and physical taking. As much as technology has been overused in a way without enough communication, I think we want to bridge both of those and be sure that, that a patient has a discussion with a doctor before the tests are ordered, and not just about the tests. So the timeline, we've passed one and two of these. We announced the school in September. We have to now work on a self-study that's due in August of this year. That goes to our accrediting agency, and they decide whether we can accept a class in 2016. The class accepted in the fall of 2016 starts in 2017 fall. But there's only a short window for recruiting medical students. So that self-study, we have to have the whole curriculum for the first two years. We have to have an outline for the third and fourth year. We have to have everything for the faculty, the appointments and bylaws and handbooks. We have to have everything for the students, their support services, their admissions, their financial aid. We have to have all the affiliations for the clinical hospitals, a 10-year financial plan. And I think I'm leaving out some stuff, too. So a big job we have, but, but an exciting one. They do a site visit about a year from now. It's going to be either January, February next year. And then we hope we'll recruit that first class of 60 students. We hope that we, we know we won't have our building built by then. We have agreement with the local VA that we could start the class there, that they have space. We have to send that up to the central VA and have it come back down as approved. But we'd like to start the class at the VA in that time. So we're going to have a couple of special programs that are here. One that's really close to me is bioethics. This community has some bioethicists, but not very many, not nearly as many as most cities would have for their hospitals and their universities. But we think these certificates, we will have a core amount of material in each of these areas for every medical student. We'll order, offer an 18 credit hour certificate that will be open to medical students... We'll order, offer an 18-credit hour certificate that will be open to medical students, but to all other health profession students, and for continuing education for anybody in the health professions. And I think we'll find a lot of people interested in, in these, these particular areas. Our progress to date, I think we've done a, a lot in a short amount of time. We did the 10-year financial plan for the regions in May, we announced the school, we've determined the location, and that's the one I'm really going to talk about. But let me mention that we've recruited the first two faculty leaders. Ellen Cosgrove is going to be the vice dean for education. She's currently the vice dean for academic affairs at the University of Seattle, University of Washington in Seattle. So she's had that same job there, she's had that job at University of New Mexico, too. So she comes with a lot of experience. And you might wonder, as I did, I didn't think for a minute she really would, would come to Las Vegas, but it's that she can innovate here. She can actually do the same thing that attracted me. She said in Washington, "It's cast in concrete, nobody wanted to change anything." She had one department chair say, "Over my dead body would I change the curriculum." And the good news is, she comes here and she can help plan something really special. And the same goes for Sam Parish. He's at Quinnipiac, which is a brand-new medical school that has its first class in the second year right now. So he's been through this early accreditation of a school. He's been, he's coming as the senior associate dean for student affairs and student admissions. So we have the curriculum piece and the student piece ready for getting that, all that data ready for our self-study in August. He's coming for a variety of reasons, too, but because he wanted also to be at a place that was going to be really a, a major academic research center where he could help plan the best way to do things. So it brings me to the location. I don't have a, a rendering of what our building would look like, so I'm showing you what Temple University's new medical education building looks like. And I hope ours looks even more spectacular than this one. We really are asking donors for money for this building. We did not ask the legislature for any bricks-and-mortar kind of money, we are asking them, as I said, for just the core education dollars. We think this is going to be a high-rise building, probably not as big as this one, probably not as tall as this one. I've already told the, the architects we want it to look like Las Vegas, so whatever it's going to be, I hope we'll have something to show you later on, but we do want it to, to look like Las Vegas. And then this is the medical district, it, it, the map of it. You can see the 15 on the right-hand side and, and everything beyond it. In one square, it says U N L V, that's actually, it's N C that officially has the land, but that is our U N L V Shadow Lane campus. So there right now is the dental school. The dental school is the big white buildings at the bottom of the square. That currently is what is there. You can see a lot of parking lots. This is about an 18-acre site. This site, it's been estimated, there was a site study done of this site, and just if you looked at that Shadow Lane piece, it could hold something like 450,000 more square feet. So it's, it's got a lot more room to grow. There's one of the, the buildings there that, that needs to come down. Up above, where it says S N H D, I think that's what it says, that's the old health district building. That's the 10-acre site that we have a memorandum of understanding with the county that would be transferred to N C, or it would be leased, or it would be somehow worked out, that would be the site for our first building. That first building would hold the first two years of the medical curriculum, it would hold the administration of the school, and all of the pieces we really would need to get, to get the school started. You can see why it's such a great location, it's across the street from Valley Hospital, but it's very close to U M C. So it's right in the center of things, and it's right the heart of the medical district. We want to put there, not just the medical school building, we want to put nursing and allied health. They have a building designed, that was originally designed to go in the Shadow Lane area, but I think we'll do some redesign and have everything together with the medical school, so we can use shared classrooms, actually do things together in those classrooms. And we can have a big library that can be a, a library for the community as well as a library just for the school. So it's an exciting spot, we're really pleased to have it there. We do plan to have some other buildings, ultimately, research building, at least one, some translational research, search space and some practice space. We also plan on having practice space and possibly a research building near the V A, and ultimately maybe a practice building for third and fourth-year students and residents in Henderson as well. So multiple practice sites, but the core and heart of the first building would be here. And with that, I'm just going to briefly talk about residencies because this ci, city needs residencies, too. It's not just medical school that's needed. On the other hand, it's not just residencies that are needed either. You need to have the teachers to teach the residents, and that's the faculty, that's the 121st people that we'll be recruiting. So it's a long road to go from medical school to residency to fellowship, and actually, I should have changed it to three years, mini fellowships now are three years. So it's a long, a long haul, but it's an investment in the future, and just bringing the faculty brings practicing people here. So we need to increase everything, primary care, specialty. Our niche is really going to be the specialty niche. Turo is a great osteopathic school that's very good for primary care, has a few students that go into specialties, but is more primary care. Roseman's going to be in between, they aren't going to have the whole structure of an academic health center, but they're going to have pieces of it, and so I think we can all work well together. So what we promise, Las Vegas, this region and the state, is that we'll be accredited in 10 years, I hope sooner than that, but they don't give you full accreditation until you have your last class in the fourth year. So at, at the earliest, it's seven years to full accreditation. We will be, by then have graduated 180 students, that's three classes worth, recruited at least 120 faculty, and have, and be able to show we have physicians staying and practicing here. But here's the real economic impact that Councilwoman Tarkanian understands, at least 5,300 new jobs, at least in 10 years, $800 million of economic impact. It'll be a billion a few years after that, and I, and I believe the billion because at University of Kansas, the school was about $1.2 billion a year. The hospital itself was $4 billion enterprise at, at University of Kansas. If we can convert U M C to just a quarter of that, that would be nice, wouldn't it? And direct revenue, we're anticipating the practice itself, the research grants, $50 million of federal funding for research grants, tuition, and state dollars, our budget would be about $250 million a year. So about a dollar spent for $4 gained in economic benefit. So we hope to really be a, a super addition to this community with an economic benefit and a health benefit that I think really could help this region. And I'm happy if there's time to answer questions.
We'd love to ask.
Good.
Pretty good at that, but thank you so much, it's so exciting. And I heard from Councilman Barlow and Councilman Coffin, so we'll go there, and I have some questions. So Councilman Barlow, and to my right, I'm sure, as well, so thank you, this is so exciting.
Thank you all for your help.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And thank you so very much for the presentation. I do have approximately four questions for you. You mentioned on a few occasions that the mental health and addiction components of the health system does not make money. Can you explain or elaborate as to your reference as to?
Right.
It does not make money?
Yes. Different specialties, well, may, I guess I should start with the physician side. There's two sides to it, the hospital side and the physician side. And in Nevada, there was some correction to, to actually paying more for psychiatry beds. Over the last couple of years, hospitals then have, have actually gotten more reimbursement for their psychiatric beds, and so they have increased the number of them. So the state made an, an adjustment to the reimbursement on, on the hospital side. On the physician's side, it's one of the areas that, that just has been neglected for years, and not just here in Nevada, but across the country. The reimbursement is a little bit different, it's been lower, it has not been enough to sustain enough psychiatrists to stay in the state. It's made it very difficult for patients to get the appropriate treatment, although there's some really good treatment programs, they're small, don't take care of enough of the patients. So there is a reimbursement issue, and it's just very hard to make a living as a psychiatrist and in the mental health field. The group, I'm trying to think of the name of it, there's, there's an outstanding group in town that actually does take patients and do case management and do a very good job of taking care of them, but it's very difficult, and the hospitals are struggling with it, and the physicians struggle even harder with it.
Yeah, and I find that to be very unfortunate because far too often, specifically in the streets here of the city of Las Vegas and throughout Southern Nevada, there are a number of mentally ill individuals out on the streets and inside of our homes that need desperate assistance, and if in fact they had the appropriate triage in relation to getting them the necessary pills that they may need, or, or guidance, or counseling, that they too will have an opportunity to be sustained, to, to sustain themselves in order to live a quality health, or I should say, a quality life. And I just see if in fact, Southern Nevada, the state of Nevada, does not take this more seriously than we have in the past, that this is only going to exacerbate the issues and it's going to cost us even more in the future as more mentally ill individuals continue to fall upon, and weigh upon the, the governments as well as those out on the street. And I, I think we are really doing, doing them a disservice as a state and as a city and as a county in regards to the mental health area. And this is no swipe at the job that you're doing in re, in regards to bringing this medical school, which is much needed, into Southern Nevada, and specifically here to the city of Las Vegas. But I, I truly believe that we are going to hurt ourself in the future as it relates to the most vulnerable and the most needy individuals that could surely use our medical assistance.
Can I just say, I absolutely agree with you, you put it very well. It, it really needs a bigger investment, and it's only going to be a worse problem if the investment doesn't start sooner rather than later. I did think of the name of the really outstanding service that you do have in this community, and it's the Mojave Mental Health Service. They have multiple sites across the city, there probably are others, but that's the one that I visited, and they take wonderful care of their patients, they just can't take care of, of everybody that.
Right.
That needs it.
Well, kudos to Mojave Medical Mental Health Facility for doing that. My second question is, how do you select students who will remain in Nevada? You've mentioned that several times as well, so I'm just curious as to after we educate them, how, what is it that we can do to, to place the carrot in front of those graduating students, to inform them, to let them know that this is the place that they do need to remain?
That's a really good question, and we were very intentional about it in Kansas. It had been a tradition there to try to keep Kansas residents there. So we took a very high proportion of Kansas residents, and we'll take a very high proportion of Clark County residents into this medical school because many of them have ties to family already here. Many of them who want to stay in practice right now have to leave to go to medical school somewhere else, they have to go at least to Reno, if not to somewhere else in the country. So that, right there, I think will help. The next thing you have to do is you have to have a really good medical education, so they have people they want to emulate, a place they want to stay, a place they want to practice. Then you have to have the right kind of residency programs, and this, this state doesn't have, actually, the, the top residencies, the, the top of the class medical students want, there are five of them, they're not taught in this, in this state at all. So if, if a student wants to go into dermatology, radiology, anesthesiology, ophthalmology, neurosurgery, and there's at least one more of them, they have to leave. So we automatically lose them. Physicians are more apt to stay close to where they do their residency. So it turns out that the big doctors groups and the hospitals are the strongest supporters of the school because they're recruiting all the specialists from outside, from all those specialties that don't even exist here. So, so that's what you do to keep them, but you have to work through the whole system and make it excellent through the whole way.
In addition to that, you also mentioned that you must have specific areas to study that would attract students to stay as well. What are those areas that you speak of?
Well, you have to have the broad medical curriculum, but we have to add residencies in those areas that we aren't teaching, anesthesia, radiology, and all of those areas. Orthopedics, that was the other one, so that's another one that, that needs to be added and is right, ready to be added. So you have to, you have to have the programs that they want to take. And then they have to be, the programs that you do have have to be good enough.
Right. Mr. Snyder, I see you creeping up behind her. Would you like to?
May, may, may interrupt just.
But you have to announce yourself, please.
This is Don Snyder, I'm the, what is my title? I'm, I'm a presidential advisor for, for U N L V these days. I just wanted to say thank you for the partnership. I'm, I'm, I'm chairing a conference call that starts at 10:30, and I hate to walk out of here because we've, we've developed wonderful partnerships over the course of the last 20 or so years. We've really accomplished some incredible things, uh, working together, and you, Mayor, were kind enough to mention some of those things. But I think that this is a partnership that is going to show what really we can accomplish at a even higher level than we have in the past, because there's nothing that I've seen in my time with U N L V that will be more significant for what U N L V is going to do for this community. And, and I, I have never, I've not seen anything that will help to solve community issues and problems the way that the School of Medicine will. So, so it's a wonderful partnership that is being created here, I thank you for that. We have a wonderful team at, at work on this project. You've been listening to the person that's on point for us, but I'll tell you, I've had a chance now to work with her for, for many months, and, and it's been a, a, a period of time where I've gained increasing respect for her and her experience and her vision for what we can build here. So I just wanted to thank you before I walked out of the room, I didn't want to disrespect this wonderful group, but, but I do need to walk out, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again for everything you've done, not only here, but for the city. I mean, your impact has just been phenomenal, and we're all living because of everything you've been involved in and so many others. And so this dream and this vision really is tremendous, you must be just so high from it.
I am, thank you very much.
He's done a lot, and he still is. He's helping us with all kinds of, of things in his role as special advisor.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. And last two follow-up questions. One, the first thing that comes to mind as it relates to doctors in this community, I know a few short years ago that it was a major issue with, if memory serves me correctly, it was the malpractice insurance that was affecting a lot of doctors here in Southern Nevada, or I should say throughout the state of Nevada, and a number of them chose to move out of the state. Is there anything that we can do at the local level or, or something that needs to be taken up at the state level in order to make those appropriate adjustments to keep those doctors in our community? Because a lot of specialty doctors, as you, as you alluded to in your presentation here today, as far as those specialty areas, a lot of those specialists chose to move out due to the malpractice insurance. And so I'm, you know, not to get bogged down in, in, in the malpractice insurance side, but what is it that we can do to partner, to collaborate, in order to improve the quality of that insurance so that we can keep those specialty doctors here, so that we're not utilizing McCarran Airport as our first line of response?
Well, I think the malpractice issue is pretty well solved. I, I think that one is done and, and fixed, if you will. I think it was amazing how fast it got fixed. It got to a terrible crisis, but then it got fixed quickly. The issue really is reimbursement in general on the physician's side, and that's harder to fix, and I don't think there probably is a local fix. I think it probably is more of a statewide fix, but, but other people need to look into it. The other thing I just say is a warning to the community that the expanded Medicaid is a wonderful thing for all the people that didn't have insurance, but there really are not enough doctors to take care of the expanded Medicaid population. And that's one thing I think we can help with, with our teaching clinics, that, that's an ideal way where residents and students can help take care of them at a primary care level and maybe even a specialty level. So I just put on your radar that I think reimbursement is clearly an issue that needs to, to come up. to, to come up, and that the taking, just literally taking care of expanded Medicaid...
And if I may interject here, Doctor, and with your permission, Councilman, um, that is something we have been doing diligently, talking with our legislators already, because we have been bleeding physicians to other states where the reimbursement on the insurance pay, um, is so much higher. And I believe it is pretty much in the hands of our legislature, and I know Councilwoman and I, at every meeting that we go to, because we do know that Cleveland Clinic has been very slow in its expansion, and because it doesn't pencil out because of that. So, whatever we can continue to do to be the voice and the effort to make sure that the legislature is taking that under consideration, because everything that we're planning here and that you've got planned with Dr. Jessup and everybody else in our regions, um, it can't happen, because I know just from the personal experience of my son, the states, the neighboring states, just soliciting him to join them and leave Nevada. So, yeah, I know you know that, but it is something, because we do have this that's reviewed again and again, and for any legislators that are listening to this, critical, it's critical, absolutely critical.
I, I agree.
So, we're, we're a voice there. Sorry, Councilman.
And just as my closing thought, uh, it's okay, Mayor, um, just as my closing thought, the majority of the greatest, or I should say, all of the greatest hospitals throughout the country are research-based.
Yes.
Paint us the word picture, if you will, as far as the structure of the UNLV Medical School, as to how in fact we can be a part of those great names moving forward from a research standpoint. Thank you.
You're absolutely correct about the great hospitals all have great research. Those five areas I listed are the ones that we're going to build research in. I'm not going to have a traditional basic science research, so I'm not going to have a Department of Biochemistry and Physiology. I'm going to have a group that's cardiovascular, a group that's cancer, and they'll have basic scientists, and they'll have clinicians. So, so we'll integrate it together, so we can apply the research as quickly as possible straight to the patient. So, we, we've projected $50 million of outside-funded research from the National Cancer Institute, from other NIH branches, from any, any kinds of ways, and each of those areas is really ripe for research growth. Ruvo's the one I pointed to with the neuroscience, but orthopedics, for instance, they do all kinds of, of new, uh, compounds for joints and, and, and growth of stem cells for regenerating surfaces and, and clinical trials. So, there's a huge opportunity in each of those areas, and I think the mental health one is one we can really build too, because it's, it's not as strong in many other places. So, I think we can really look at those areas as the ones, very focused way, finding the best partners who are already doing things, hiring whole research groups together. So, the goal would be that we would find a philanthropist, for instance, who would like to hire a whole group, help us hire a whole group, with a lead person to run the group, and, and junior faculty along with that, as well as the research techs and people with it. So, so it's sort of looking at the grand vision of how we can build each one of those individually. I think the first one's likely to be built at the VA, because that, they have research space, and we currently don't have research space. I guess the other big asset we have is the UNLV faculty currently, because there's quite a bit of medical research happening at UNLV right now, in the School of Science, but in other schools. And particularly in some of the mental health areas, they're doing some very good work on autism and, and other kinds of mental health work. So, we have partners in a lot of areas, and that's, again, uh, one of the goals we'll have for building our research program. The hope with the research program is just being able to generate the research at that level will help bring the whole university to a tier-one status. So, this fits together with the tier-one piece, and, and we can be a, a leader in helping the whole university, uh, become a real, really strong tier-one research university.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Mayor, finally.
Any other, yes, Councilman?
Mayor?
Yes?
This is Betsy. Just a little notice, the dean does have to get to the airport for a flight in about an hour, so, just, just wanted to kind of put that on everybody's radar screen, that she's got another commitment she's going to have to scoot out for shortly.
Fine. So, in, uh, as few words as possible?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Do you?
Yeah, ready, go.
Doctor, I heard you discussing the issue of, uh, locating facilities around the valley, and, uh, I, I just want to ask you, why would we physically fragment our effort here? Why wouldn't it all be in one place where colleagues can visit with each other, and there can be, you know, the collisions that, that we really think are necessary for this kind of an atmosphere?
For the clinical practice piece, you have to put it where the patients are. So, we'll put something in the med- in the medical district, that's for sure. But, the area out near the VA has the VA families, and it has a lot of opportunities for, for our students to see patients. If you look at, for instance, the old Henderson area, there might be that expanded Medicaid population that would be, that would be very, um, able to use our clinical services there. So, you want to put those, those teaching practices where the patients are. And some of them are here, but they're in other parts of the valley as well, so...
Well, but they, it's true that there is underservice here and there, but you've got the greatest underserved population right here in the center of this valley here.
Yes.
Dead center.
You do.
So, I, I do not understand why you would not be able to find enough patients to work on in this area.
It's not that we wouldn't have enough, it's how we can expand, what we can, what we can do and provide for the whole community. Um, it, it's, uh, it's just, it's a matter of serving the, the entire community, and it's a matter with the VA of being, uh, a real partner, uh, with them as well, uh, because we can, we can do that. It's an ideal opportunity for us to share faculty and to, to partner with them. So, it's an advantage to us, and it's an advantage to them. We will definitely be serving this region as well, this medical district and this whole center of Las Vegas, um, and there are plenty of patients, I do have to admit.
Yes, and there are medical instruction facilities in Henderson. That's what makes me wonder, there certainly is no shortage of caring, uh, medical professionals in Henderson, but let that go for a moment. This is all academic at this point until you get some money.
Exactly.
And, uh, maybe that's a decision that will be up to the legislature. I've been there, know that. Uh, one of the things, the, our medical school is probably thirty-five years old or more, and, uh, I was thinking that it really, it took forever to get residencies produced, and, um, you know, and even then, as you say, there are five specialties for which there are no residencies. Maybe plastic surgery would be one of those. There's a lot of that going on in town. But, how long in our timetable here would you consider that it would take to have residencies? Because it's, it's what we need today. We really need it now. And we can't wait another five, or ten, or fifteen years to develop residencies.
It's a really good, a really good question. So, in my original plan that had the ten-year budget, I had residency starting at the same time as our students started their third year, because i- in, in medical centers, it's usually a team, the faculty, residents, and the students, all on the same team. Um, since I've really come to know the community better, we've decided that we're going to try to start the residency program as early as we can, if we can get, but I have to ask for a donation for that, because we didn't put that in the original budget until year four. So, this would be a $10 million donation to start graduate medical education right away. We would hire the person, uh, who's called a designated institutional official, to start the office, get an accreditation. It's a separate accreditation for residency, so we can do it even before we have medical students. But get the institutional accreditation and be able to start residency programs. And there are hospitals here, and I will say, the governor again put money, I think, uh, $10 million in his budget for GME, that, that could be used by a variety of different hospitals to begin, it's just a plan, it's planning money, to begin new residency programs. And as I said, Dignity may be interested in starting some, Sunrise is interested in expanding. Actually, right this very moment, the VA has thirty spots that they can't use. Um, what we want to do is find partners. The, the reason they can't use them is that a VA can't be a hundred percent VA resident because there are not enough women and children, uh, in a, in the population. So, you have to have a part position in a VA and part somewhere else. So, what we're going to try to do is work the partnerships out and be able to expand pretty soon. It would mean we would start residence at the very best by a year from July.
I, I don't want to extend this any further. I think I'm going to be watching closely, like everybody else will, what the legislature does, but I could say one thing from experience, don't sell your naming rights too cheaply.
Yes, you're right.
They can afford ten, they can afford more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not hearing any other, I know that Councilwoman and I can speak as one here. This is something that's so important. I know Mountain View has come up with a hundred and fifty residency programs over the next five years. Valley already has ninety, I believe, beyond the UMC.
Right. And Sunrise has some too.
Well, we are so very excited, so grateful that you came down. Dr. Jessup, thank you so much. Team and, and James Dean, thank you so much. Thank you. This is so exciting. We're here for you. We will be with you. This is about building a world-class city, and that's it. And Betsy has a horse waiting for you at the gate.
Thank you very much. Really was a pleasure.
Thank you. We're so excited. Thank you.
We'll work hard together.
Okay, that was a report, so we will generally now move on to Agenda Item forty-four.
Madam Mayor, could I just ask, I don't know who ran these copies off, I know, uh, but could you run about another four or five off for me? Because I would like to give these to other people who are working closely, and also for some people who may be interested in giving donations.
We'd be happy to do that.
And is that our Mayor Pro Tem from North Las Vegas there?
Yes, it is.
We welcome you. Anita Woods does great work, and, uh, I'm sure you are happy to hear about, uh, the Veterans Clinic and what's happening out there. And you have to say who you are too, even though I just said it.
Thank you. And good, good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, I guess we're item forty-four, so I think we're there.
Yes, we are, and the report from Wes Henderson, of course, executive, even though I'm saying it, Executive Director of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities Regarding League Activities, Accomplishments, and Their Bill Draft Request for the two-fifth, two-oh-one-five-seventy-eight Session of Nevada's Legislature, it's in reference to all wards, and as I announced, even though I said it, our Mayor Pro Tem from North Las Vegas, welcome.
Yes. Thank, thank you again, Madam Mayor, and for the record, my name is Wes Henderson. I do have the honor of serving as the Executive Director of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities, and I'm extremely pleased to have Mayor Pro Tem Anita Wood with me today. She is our president for this year, and this is her first official presentation as president. So, with your permission, I'd like to turn the microphone over to her for a few minutes, if I could.
And this is a woman who never gets nervous, so I know.
Well, thank you. Good morning. I am actually very honored and privileged to be the president of the Nevada League of Cities this year, and looking forward to the, uh, challenges and the hard work that comes with it, and hopefully doing some, some great work over this next year. Um, the Nevada League of Cities, I think all of you are aware, is just a tremendous asset for us. Uh, it gives cities throughout, not only just Southern Nevada, but throughout the state, an opportunity to work together, to share our challenges, to share our successes, to set examples for other cities, to hopefully work on some solutions when it comes to challenges together, um, and just do everything that we can to help our state prosper. Uh, I can assure you that the city of Las Vegas is very well represented, uh, at the league. Uh, Councilman Ross is a former past president, uh, and continues to serve on the league, and is very, very active and very outspoken, and truly a visionary, and we are very, uh, lucky to have his time and his efforts, uh, with us. So, thank you, Councilman Ross. Uh, the league, I think, plays a particularly important role in years such as this, in legislative years. And I think Las Vegas is in a great position to know that, uh, our legislature works very, very hard, but since you have two former legislators on your board, you know that although they work hard, they do not always understand the repercussions of the legislation that they pass and how it affects the cities, how it affects local government. And the league gives us an opportunity to work together at the state legislature, to work with our legislators as they are working on this legislation, and to have a say, and to be able to speak up and let them know where the problems lie, and what effect it is going to have on us. Uh, and so, I think particularly in this legislative session, uh, we're looking at a, a very different dynamic than we've seen in the past. Uh, we have some very different issues coming up, uh, so I think the league and, uh, its resources are going to be particularly valuable this year. Um, I know that I am going to be working very hard with the legislature, and, um, I urge your support. Uh, we've been, all of us, been very, very busy dealing with medical marijuana. Um, it's been obviously a key issue for all of us, uh, but I can tell you from doing my visit to the city of Denver, uh, in Colorado, to learn about this new issue, uh, one of the things that became very clear to me, uh, that they have not resolved in that, uh, area is packaging and labeling, and making sure that it is labeled and packaged in a way that it's very clear what it is, um, and that we do not have some of the issues that they have had of these, uh, products getting in the hands of children, uh, who are then taking too much, because they don't necessarily understand that a brownie this size, which we would normally consider a single serving, is actually ten doses when it comes to medicine. Uh, and so, we are looking at some of the legislation that Denver wants to bring before its, uh, Colorado legislature, and see if we can use some of that, uh, and come up with, uh, some of our own solutions to make sure, uh, that this continues to be a forefront, and that this industry coming into our state, uh, and particularly into Southern Nevada, continues to be positive. So, we look forward to doing a lot of work. Uh, this Friday, we also have, uh, our local government summit that we are hosting in conjunction with, uh, NACO, the Nevada Association of Counties, uh, and I urge each and every one of you, if you are able to make that event, to please do so. We would love to have you and your input, uh, and I think it's going to really set the stage, uh, for the legislative session, uh, and how local government wants to play a role in, a role in that this year. Thank you very much.
Uh, Madam President, um, if you would, if anybody is interested and able with their schedule to get to this on Friday, um, physically, where is it being held, and what's the best response for us?
Well, it is physically being held at the Henderson Convention Center. Uh, it is eight-thirty Friday morning, uh, and, uh...
All day?
Uh, about eight-thirty to noon, I believe, this is about noon, one o'clock, very lightest. So, pretty much just the morning.
And, uh, contact us through the Nevada League of Cities website. Okay. Thank you so much.
Mayor, before Mr. Henderson continues, um, if I can, uh, elaborate a little more on what Mayor Pro Tem Wood had mentioned about this conference, this is where the local governments get together to make the legislators nervous. That's what it is to me. So, I look forward to this coming around every legislative session, so we have that opportunity to go up, you know, to sit down together as local governments and discuss issues that are important to local governments, um, that, that otherwise some legislators may not be aware of, so they're invited to come as well, and I think I remember the first time we did this, they were all sitting in the back being quiet, not, not wanting us to know they were in the room, but, uh, it's a very effective tool to get our message across as local governments. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, uh, did you want to conclude, or...
Actually, I actually have a few remarks I'd like to make, if, if I may.
Please, please continue. Thank you.
Uh, and first of all, I, I'd like to thank, you know, you, the city of Las Vegas, for your membership and participation in the league. You know, we derive our, our strength from our members, and I'd also like to thank, uh, Las Vegas for having co-hosted our two thousand and fourteen conference with the city of North Las Vegas. If I could, I'd like to highlight very briefly some of the activities of the league over the past year. Yeah, I think it's been an exciting year, and we've made strides toward making the, the league a stronger organization. Our Board of Directors has adopted changes to the makeup of the membership and officer structures, and added three new at-large members to the executive committee. One of these at-large members is from a, will be from a large city, one from a smaller city or large town, and one from a small town or general improvement district. This way, all types of our members will have representation on the executive committee at all times, and I'll think this, I think this will make us a more robust and, and well-balanced, um, organization. I'd like to thank Councilman Ross for his work in this. He chaired the committee that was formed to look into these issues and make the recommendations to the Board of Directors, and he's also volunteered and got selected to serve as the at-large member for large cities. So, Councilman Ross, we certainly thank you for that, and, uh, I know I'll, just to pay that coming somewhere down there. But, it's okay. Yeah, our, our conference was, was a big success as well. Again, thank you. Uh, we were honored to be visited by two members of our congressional delegation, and Senator Heller and Congresswoman Titus. Our educational sessions provided vital information, and were well-attended. I'd like to thank, uh, our social events, I thought... I'd like to thank our social events, I thought, they provided a unique opportunity to network with your municipal official colleagues from across the state, and I'd like to thank Esther Carter from your staff for all her hard work, not only to ensure the success of the evening at the Moab Museum, but also the conference as a whole. The league has entered into an agreement with US Communities, which is a nationwide purchasing program. Las Vegas is one of our members that have been taking advantage of this program, and we hope by the league becoming a state sponsor that we can get more of our members to save some money buying goods and services that they need every day. Then, as you're aware, the legislative session begins February 2nd, which just happens to be Groundhog's Day. And I know Councilman Coffin and Councilman Beers will understand my reference to Groundhog Days and the legislative sessions, but we are authorized by law to submit five bill draft requests every session. We did submit five, I believe you have them in your handout, I can go over them briefly if time allows. Our first bill would be AB 19, and this bill seeks to allow local governments the flexibility regarding the date on which they hold a public hearing on their tentative budgets. As you know, you're required to submit a budget by April 15th of every year, but then the statute requires you to have a budget hearing on a specific date, and for cities, that date is the third Tuesday in May. Well, obviously for North, for Las Vegas, this will require you to have a special meeting, and special meetings cost money. So this bill would simply add the words "or" before to allow you the flexibility to hold your budget hearing during a regularly scheduled council meeting. The second bill is AB 25, which we believe is a clarifying bill. It just adds language to make it clear that proceeds for the residential construction tax can be used for improvements to existing parks and not just for the construction of new parks within the geographic area where the revenue is generated. SB 22 would eliminate the need for certain businesses, such as liquor importers, wholesale dealers, et cetera, to attain a county license in addition to the city license if their principal place of business is located within the city, before they can get a license from the Department of Taxation. This bill was actually brought forward by Las Vegas staff, and we appreciate their hard work in helping us craft the language for this.
Excellent.
Our next bill would be Senate Bill 28, and this would clarify existing statutes to define what constitutes the extraordinary use of personnel or technological resources in complying with public records requests. That term is in the statute now, you are allowed to charge for it, but it's not defined. So we are seeking to define that. This bill is in no way an attempt by any of our members to restrict access to public records. I'm proud to say that our members stand strongly in support of open and transparent government and endeavor, and endeavor to provide public access to information across a variety of platforms. Then our final bill, which is Senate Bill 51, would establish and fund a state-coordinated agency for the National Main Streets Program. This is an awesome program, it touches on economic development, revitalization, tourism, and improves the vitality of the areas that are selected to be main street, main streets. However, the state of Nevada does not have a state-coordinated agency, so even if you follow all the protocols of the program, which the town of Gardinerville does, you can't be recognized as a Main Street program, and there are grant opportunities that you are not eligible for because you're not an official program. And then finally, as President Wood said, we're having a local government summit on Friday at the city of Henderson. We certainly hope that you all could be there. And a couple of other upcoming events, we're having a Board of Directors meeting tomorrow at the city of North Las Vegas, where President Wood will officially take her oath of office, even though she started work on February 5th and we, or January 5th, I'm sorry, and obviously I haven't let her ease into it. Our other officers this year are Mike Giles, the mayor of the city of Love Block, and our vice president, and Gino Martini, the mayor of Sparks, is our secretary treasurer. The National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference is coming up in Washington C, March 7th to 11th, and I would like to thank Councilman Barlow for your service on the National League of Cities Board of Directors. And I'm also happy to report that Henderson Mayor Andy Hafen was recently named as chair of the National League's Finance Administrative and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. And I know you've heard me say many times how important I feel it is for us, for Nevada to participate in National League of Cities events, because that's our chance, you know, to make sure that Nevada's voice is part of the conversation that sets national municipal policies. And then Wes Windover will be hosting our conference this year, and it'll be October 13th to the 15th. And again, the legislative session begins February 2nd. We are planning on having a, on local government events, including a joint meeting of our Board of Directors and NACO Board of Directors on March 30th. So please get down in your calendars and try to come up and join us then. And again, thank you for allowing us to be here today and for your membership in the league, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, very informative, and congratulations, a little early today, but we're, no wonder you have somebody that's fabulous, so of course you would have grabbed her early. Any comments, questions? Yes, Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you very much. Wes, what are your predictions as far as the ability of the legislature to grant local governments more power? This, you see a good example of local governments fighting for scraps on the floor, under the table after the meal has been eaten. I look at the county commissioners yesterday, getting very upset over a division of a very small slice of sales tax for the creation or the construction of a parking garage within the city limits. And you know, we also are criticizing the county commission every now and then for things, so there's been this to and fro, but it really all goes back to the tax structure we have and why we have to fight for scraps. It's unbecoming, it's, it's just not good. The county commission has a real responsibility for taking care of the public welfare that is in the constitution, it's not the city's responsibility. And so they have bills to pay, we have bills to pay, and a downtown to bring back to life. So we have interests, and yet, we have to fight over crumbs because we do not rely upon a stable tax system. And I'm just curious where we're going to be on that, you know, are we going to get lip service, or will we have some devolution of power from the legislature?
Councilman Coffin, you know, it, it's a risky endeavor to try to predict what the legislature will do. However, that being said, I think local governments have a unique opportunity this year to move forward on some of the top, the issues that we've been struggling with for years. Now, how far we're going to go, I don't know. I think it is of note to point out that both chairs of the Government Affairs Committees, or the chairs of Government Affairs Committees in each house will be chaired by a former, or by a person with local government experience. You know, on the Assembly side, Assemblyman Ellison will be the chair, he's a former city councilman in the city of Elko, former county commissioner for Elko, former president of NACO. On the Senate side, Pete Gokicchia is a former county commissioner from, I believe, Eureka County. So I do think we have the possibility to move forward. I think, you know, Home Rule is a possibility, at least the first part of Home Rule, because Home Rule is really, to get true Home Rule is really a two-step process, and the first step is to overturn Dillon's Rule, so that you don't have to have specific authority to take an action. You can act unless you are limited or prohibited by statute or constitutional provision.
Well, are we presenting a bill draft to do that?
We are not.
If we don't ask, they're not going to give.
Senator Gokicchia put the bill in for us this session. It's SB 11, it is a resubmission of SB 2, which was a NACO bill from last session, seeking to do just that, to turn Dillon's Rule right side up, so that you as a body can take an action unless you are prohibited by statute or by constitution. That's the first step. Then the second step is going back through, I have a stack of papers, this high, printed on both sides, of statutes that control local governments. Now, the second step to get Home Rule is to go back into statutes and take out some of the more onerous language over the course of, it's going to take a few legislative sessions, but I think we're going to get the ball at least started to roll towards true Home Rule this session.
Thank you.
Councilman Barlow, you were blinking before. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Councilwoman Anita Wood and Wes Henderson for job well done as far as representing the Nevada League of Cities, and you all know just as well as I do as far as how important it is for council members throughout the municipalities to be involved in what's taking place, not only at the local level when it comes to Nevada League of City issues, but also at the national level. And so I just encourage my colleagues and other colleagues around the valley in municipal office to consider participating and joining, because the work that we're doing is really changing the lives, not only of those residents in which we represent, but for those residents that share in the same common goals and objectives that we face each and every day as council members in our respective cities and towns. So thank you so very much.
Thank you for your report. We wish you a wonderful rest of the week, and thank you, we're very excited for it. So thank you, I'll try to get out there, I'm sort of booked, but we'll make every effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 45, a report from Jeff LaRude, Senior Project Manager of Nevada Department of Transportation Regarding the Southern Nevada High Occupancy Vehicle HOV Master Plan Update. This is in reference to all wards.
Hello, Mayor, members of council, David Bowers, Director of Public Works, and it's my pleasure to introduce Jeff today. He's going to be updating us on the HOV plan for Southern Nevada. The plan was created in 2007, and it's being updated now to incorporate changes since that time, as well as the anticipated changes with Project NEON. So with that, here's Jeff.
And two, sorry to embarrass you, but would you re-announce yourself, even though Mr. Bowers already did?
Sure.
Thank you.
So good morning, my name is Jeff LaRude, I'm a project manager with the Department of Transportation, and today I'm here to give you an update on the HOV plan for the Southern Las Vegas Valley. So with the update, I'll provide you a little background of the original HOV plan, the purpose of the update, the proposed HOV system recommendations, and the next steps. So the original Southern Nevada HOV plan was published in June of 2007, and the purpose of the original study was to determine the usefulness of implementing HOV lanes in, on the freeway system in the Las Vegas areas. And since that time, you've already seen some of the results of the study with the HOV lanes on US 95, the Summerlan direct connector, and the express lanes on I-15. This is how the current HOV system works on US 95. It's, the requirement is two plus occupants in the vehicle, emergency vehicles and, emergency vehicles and motorcycles are allowed, but trucks with more than two axles are not. They're operating during the weekday peak period between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM, and 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and they have continuous access. On the other hand, the express lanes on I-15, all vehicles are allowed in those lanes, trucks included. They're operated 24 hours a day and they have limited access. So why the update? The RTC has updated their travel demand model since the original study to include the mode choice element, and what that is, is it's a tool to extract HOV demand out of the model, and it gives us a much better idea of the HOV demand in the valley. So with that, with that included in the, in the new model, and with NEON coming on board, which is going to connect the US 95 HOV lanes to the express lanes on I-15, we thought it was a good time to readdress this study and update it. So with that, these, these five elements are part of the plan update. We're going to use the 2035 RTC Regional Travel Demand Model, identify the system near-term priorities in the NEON area, the system near-term priorities on I-15 from Sahara down to Blue Diamond, update the overall HOV plan, including the direct access ramps, and then provide public outreach and workshops to stakeholders. This picture here depicts the system near-term that we've identified as part of the study. It's very similar to what we have today. It starts out on US 95 way up by Ann Road, which is going to be extended to Durango next summer, comes down through the Rainbow Curve and over to the Spaghetti Bowl at I-15. At I-15, I just mentioned that with Project NEON, we're going to come in and we're going to connect the median from 95 to the median of I-15, and when we do that, we're going to have 22 miles of continuous HOV lanes. And as you can see, it also goes south on I-15 down to Silverado Ranch. This is the long-term system that we've identified. I should mention that the short-term system is scheduled between 2018 and 2025, and this long-term solution is, is 2025 and beyond. In fact, we might even have another update by the time we, we get to this situation, but this is what we've currently identified. Again, on I-15, excuse me, on US 95 out to the northwest, we have one lane in each direction coming down to the Rainbow Curve, and I'd like to point out between the Rainbow Curve and the Spaghetti Bowl, we've identified two lanes in each direction. And then south on I-15, we have two lanes in each direction going down to the 215, I-15 system interchange. And then, as you can see, these are the other areas that we've identified throughout the valley on 215 and on I-55 to the east. So we've come up with some new recommendations as far as how the HOV lanes are going to operate, and this is what we're going to be taking forward in the upcoming months. Again, it's still going to be required two plus occupants in the car, or in the vehicle. The hours of operation, however, are now going to be 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Trucks with two or more axles will still not be allowed, motorcycles will still be allowed, as well as emergency vehicles and public transit, including deadhead buses. One thing that we haven't determined yet is to allow the low emission vehicles in the lane yet. We're continuing to study that because we don't know if we have enough capacity in the, in the one lane to allow those vehicles in yet, so there's further study that needs to be done with that. And then finally, the access on the, the new HOV system will be limited, similar to the express lanes on I-15. So speaking of the express lanes, this is kind of how we're doing the conversion. On I-15, we currently have two express lanes and three general-purpose lanes as a general rule, and then after the update, or excuse me, after NEON comes in and we convert it to an HOV lane, we're only going to have one HOV lane, and the other express lane's going to become a general-purpose lane. So our next steps, we've completed our initial modeling, and our analysis is complete. Now we're out reaching out to you all, the agencies and stakeholders, and trying to get some public feedback. In the next, in the next month or so, we're going to have a stakeholder workshop where we kind of lay out our proposed plan of how we're going to operate, or operate the HOV lanes, and after that, we will finalize our study, and we're hoping to have that finalized early April this year. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, it looks exciting. I'm sorry you're waiting to 2030, I don't think I'll be alive. Yes, please.
Okay, so I drive 95 from Cheyenne to downtown in the morning, and then I drive it at night and during the peak hours. And the, all the regular lanes are pretty backed up, and the HOV lane, I see 10 cars. So do you have a way of measuring, or some kind of metrics to even know that the HOV lanes are, are even successful as far as usage, or should they just be opened up to regular traffic? Is there any way to, to measure that? Because I just want to make sure that the, you know, the HOV lanes are being useful as HOV lanes, or are they just, is it just a waste of time? So that's my first question, and then, and then the hours of operation, I don't know why you would change the hours of operation from the peak times to 24 hours, because it seems like that's when they would be, that's when they're most useful during the peak rush hour times. The rest of the times, I don't know why you wouldn't just keep them the way it is. In fact, I think you should probably shorten the hours, because 2:00, I think that's when it starts in the afternoon, 2:00 is not rush hour traffic, so it really should be something like, like 4:00 to 7:00, something like that. That's really when the traffic, so that's my comments on, on the hours of operation, but if you could just touch on my first question, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so to address your first question, whether or not the HOV lane, or the metrics to measure the HOV, HOV lane success, one of the, one of the biggest selling points of the HOV lane is we're trying to enhance mobility. So those five, 10 cars that are in that lane, they're going to have a guaranteed, guaranteed trip to and from their destination, and that's what we're trying to sell. It's like, if you're willing to get into a car with another person and commute with them, your trip is going to be more reliable. So that, that is one of the main selling points of an HOV lane, is trying to shift people's thinking to carpooling and getting the other congestion off the mainline lanes to help the mainline traffic travel, you know, travel more. And this is John Karachpon with Jacobs Engineering, who's, who's doing the heavy lifting on this study, and I don't know if you'd like to add anything?
Sure. So I'm John Karachpon.
Your microphones, there it is. Now if you'd repeat that again, please. Thank you, it's okay now.
Apologize. I'm John Karachpon, I'm with Jacobs Engineering, I'm the consultant project manager on this project. So let me, well, I'll first go with the first question, of course. The, what we want to do with the HOV lanes is ensure, as Jeff said, that there is in fact a travel advantage. There, we, through the course of the study, we did actually look at how much traffic was using the HOV lanes. It is substantially less than the GP lanes, but there is traffic around the curve, and as you come in, it's about 900 vehicles per hour, and up to 900 vehicles per hour with two people in it or more, means that we're actually carrying the equivalent of about 1,800 in the GP lane. Of course, the GP lane is carrying substantially more traffic. the GP lane is carrying substantially more traffic. But we have, but we are maintaining that travel time advantage of going through. Now, the second part of that is, since the system is a short system today, people have to get off, and they have to move into, to get to I-15 or to downtown, they have to, the, the HOV lane ends pretty soon. So, we don't have a continuous system. The expectation is, when we have a longer system, 22 miles, there will be significantly higher use of those HOV lanes. We're projecting 30% to 65% higher. And that provides the length that we need to actually have the travel time savings that people will try and take advantage of.
Thank you. And you want to continue?
All right. Well, that, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that if we have these, so, so are you changing people's driving habits based on having HOV lanes? Is that, is that occurring? Are we seeing an increase in the number of people using HOV lanes year after year because they're available? Or is it just the same number of cars? I, I just saw, I just look at the HOV lane, look at it as an extra lane that everybody else could use, a speed of traffic for everybody else. I mean, I, I understand the point of it. You want to get people to, you know, have less cars on the roadway. But I, I just wonder if that even works. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, I appreciate the presentation. And I travel a little farther than Councilman Anthony. I go all the way out to Durango. And I do my own study of your HOV lanes. And there are two, two, two people in a car are using that, that lane. There's a lack of enforcement from law enforcement when it comes to people who cheat. I see it every single day. I see more of those cars than I see two occupancy vehicles in that lane. And I bet you see it as well. And that, that's frustrating to me. And I don't know any other way to do it. When I see NHP out there or Metro pulling people over, I mean, it's a good day to see that. And I know they're so busy because they have, you know, lack of resources as well. I think what I want to say is, why, why so much study? I mean, you guys know we need this. I mean, this is just obvious. I mean, the 215, the 515, why would, and I'll talk to your boss, because I sit on the RTC with him. But, you know, why are you studying all this? You know, we're only going to get more people in the Las Vegas Valley. More cars are going to be on the road. You guys are doing your best to force and change the habits of the, the average driver, right, to get in that HOV lane when there's two people or more in, in the vehicle. That's working, I believe, honestly. It's also significant to point out, too, that the Centennial Park and Ride or Transit Center out there, it's a direct shot into town when those, that Centennial Express Bus line comes from into downtown. It's an about 18, 20-minute ride, depending on congestion near Spaghetti Bowl or downtown. It gets pretty thick right in there. And that's when they start making that transition to change lanes. I just think, I'm frustrated by government, because government wants to study things so often and so long. It's, you know we need it. You know it's coming. Put the funding in for it today, so you have it for tomorrow. One thing I noticed in your one picture on the, the 215, ending there at about Anne Road out in the northwest. I know Clark County is currently trying to move forward with finishing that Beltway out in the northwest. And I think Commissioner Brown's doing a fabulous job by trying to drive that train. But I think that needs to be part of your study, too. More people are moving out to the northwest. More people are affected by what's happening in, going on in North Las Vegas, because it goes all the way into North Las Vegas, all the way to I-15. So, I think that needs to be included in that process, as you're studying more, studying.
Well, to address your concern, I think one of the reasons we study it is because, I mean, I, I agree with you. It's pretty obvious that HOV lanes are going to be required. But when are they going to be required? When do we need to? So, it all, it's a, it's a funding mechanism to help us identify what we need to do in the future, when, you know, when we need to start planning for it and those kinds of things. So, that's, I think that's more the answer to why the study.
Well, and Mayor, if I can continue.
Please.
I also, do you guys, do you guys get federal dollars to do this as well?
Yes.
The federal dollars. So, if you're getting federal dollars, that are going to require the study anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
Correct. I'm just a firm believer that if, if you build a freeway, put an HOV lane in. I mean, you really want to encourage people to carpool or to buy a motorcycle, whatever it is. I think you've just got to do it. And that really sends a message home that, you know, we want to, are that world-class city. We, we get transportation, and we want to make it effective for people traveling throughout the valley. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mayor.
You know, as far as the, the northwest there, that was part of our study. The, the highlighted that you see is just where the traffic volumes, the HOV volumes trigger the need for the HOV lane. So, we're not seeing that out there right now in our current models. But at future updates, I'm sure that's going to happen as more development comes out there.
And maybe if I can add to that, Jeff. The, the fact that the HOV lanes are proposed to end at that point at Anne Road does not, you know, the, the design is going to be such that it does not preclude those HOV lanes proceeding further north in the future.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for this presentation.
Your honor.
Oh, excuse me, Councilman Beers.
I, I guess I'm, so this is basically all driven by the federal government? I mean, I, I've, I've wondered, even before I was on the council, how, how we got here. We're a decentralized city. None of us live in high-rises, except for very few people downtown. Unique amongst my colleagues up here, I park in the parking garage across the street. And the, the only place you're guaranteed to find vacancies is the carpool slots. It's just, and, and, and all these people work at the same place. So, you have the concentration, at least at the work end of the commute, but they're so far apart at the residence end of the commute that the carpooling, which works fabulously well in, say, Boston and New York City, just doesn't make sense in our spread-out desert town where space is not a premium. And so, I've often wondered if this is a local initiative, or if it's driven by the federal government, because it seems like something that is trying to jam a square peg in a round hole. I drive this route every day, many times, a couple of times a day. Of your 900-per-hour peak load, I'll bet 450 of them are not old enough to drive. And the other 450 of them are married. We're simply not changing people's behavior because it doesn't make sense here in Las Vegas. So, to what extent could this be stopped?
Well, the, the way I look at it is, you know, with the cost of right-of-way, I mean, it's, it's a premium in Las Vegas. We can only build the freeway so wide. And eventually, we're, you know, everybody's going to have congestion. And so, looking at enhancing the mobility of those people that do choose to carpool, I mean, if, if everybody is, you know, bumper-to-bumper traffic, like you, like you said, in Boston or Philadelphia or something like that, you're going to see those HOV lanes just as congested or pretty close to it, because people will start making that shift. Right now, there's, I don't think the incentive is there. And I think it was, at, at one of our, one of our presentations, one of the council members said that, you know, how often does the DOT stay out in front of congestion or out in front of the, you know, the issues at hand? And, and unfortunately, the HOV lane isn't, you know, overutilized yet, or isn't utilized to its, to its, the degree we want it to be. But we're actually out in front of it for, you know, for a change. And so, as congestion increases, that, that lane will start to get more and more people in it. And, and to address the, the enforcement issue, the NXP is a partner of ours in our update, and we're working with them to try to figure out the best ways to, to enforce that and, and make it fair for everybody.
More cops.
More cops.
So, it may, it may well be that with
Yes.
4 million people in the valley, they'll make sense. But we're 2 million people away from that. So, is this the kind of thing that, that locally, we have the authority to say, you know, we ju, if I'm not mistaken, one of our statistics is that we already have some of the lowest commute times of a major metropolitan area on average. Is that not correct?
I don't know. That's a fact.
I, I don't.
I don't know.
Why wouldn't you know?
I, I don't know. I, 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 I'm going to find out. I'll find out for you.
Okay. So, is this, is this entirely federally driven, or do we have the authority locally to stop this, since it's not changing people's behavior? There, the, right now, if you go over there, it's on the, between the second and third floor. There's six parking spots. Five of them are empty, I'm almost certain. They're reserved for carpoolers. So, if we're not changing people's behavior, which I think is the goal of the program, why would we keep doing it? Because it is an inconvenience for everybody else.
What we want, you know, congestion is one of the key reasons why folks start to change behavior. And we want to be able to have that option into the future. What, the model that is predicting that we are going to continue to grow in congestion, that's also one of the reasons why we want to expand the hours of operation from what exists today to more. Because, you know, the limited driveway and so on means that we're not going to be able to add more lanes. So, we're going to have to manage with what we have, which means as those GP lanes or general-purpose lanes gets congested, there has to be an option. And that option, we are ahead of the game now, we, is going to be the HOV lanes. And so, we're going to see, today, we don't have that, that level of congestion, that pressure that's moving people over, changing behaviors, and moving people into the HOV lanes. But that's, that's what we're projecting. That's where we're going to go.
But we're far short of what your model projected we would be at 10 years ago.
Well, see, it's part of the, the system, though. Once we, once we get that connection through the Spaghetti Bowl with Project NEON, I think you're going to see a big shift to the median. And then, also, in future, we're going to start having drop ramps to and from the median to select locations down through the resort corridor. And those will encourage people to take the HOV lanes as well. And I'll tell you what, as far as those carpool spots, if I would have known I parked on the fifth floor, I would have driven with him today and parked in one of those spots if I would have known, if I parked on the fifth.
We didn't have, you know, in, in the last 10 years, we did have a little bit of an economic downturn that dropped some of those numbers as well. But we're going to see that pickup happen again.
It was a huge economic downturn in the private sector, sir. Have we given any thought to suspending this program until we do have enough congestion to, to make a difference? Or until we do get Project NEON done?
I don't, I don't think there's any, there's been any discussions on that. Yeah, that would be news to me. I haven't heard anything on that. So, so the answer to your question is I don't think that is, is something that we're looking at right now.
And so, to bring this back to my initial question, is this a set of federal rules pushing this, and we really don't have a choice? Or do you know enough about the financing of it to be able to, to comment?
I don't know enough about the financing.
I don't know about the financing.
Yeah. When the environmental action was completed for I-15, that included HOV lanes along I-15. So, essentially, when that was signed off on, by the feds, it had, it had included in it HOV lanes. So, the fact that we are going to convert the Express Lanes into HOV lane, have that HOV lane, is consistent with that action that was taken at that point in time.
Councilman Ross, please.
I, I just want to make a
Yes.
comment, Mayor, to these two gentlemen. I totally disagree with my colleague to, to my right. I think it is changing behavior patterns. And proof of that is during work hours, if you will, or school hours, and the occasion I get to ride that Centennial Express Bus to downtown from out to Centennial, that bus is full. Those buses are full. So much, so much so, that I had to actually request a double-decker bus at one of the hours because it was so packed. So, I think it is changing behavior. I think you guys are heading in the right direction. Just do it quicker.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor. The state of California has done something to increase the use of the HOV, because they've, they allow electric vehicles to use that. I'm not sure about hybrids, but electric can, you know, I've been a, I'm on my second electric vehicle now. So, and I other, our other car is a hybrid. So, I'm not plugging for hybrids to use those lanes, because they only save a minimal amount of gasoline, whereas the electrics do. And I think that that's, if you move your electrics, if you allow your electrics to use HOV, then it will take some people out of the GP lanes. Can't we do that? I mean, does that take an act of a legislature, or can we just do that administratively?
I, I think it's actually up to the DOT on that.
Yes. So, the legis, the federal government defines who can actually use the HOV lanes, and then it's sent out to the state legislature. And the state legislature, in turn, has, has put that onto the DOT and says DOT, the department has to figure out if that's appropriate or not. So, NDOT's going to do the study that determines if it's appropriate or not. Now, of course, that sun sets in 2017, and our NEON, the project opens in 2018. So, if the federal regs continue to allow energy-efficient vehicles to use such lanes, the department would then, you know, have the option, provided the state continues to hand that over to the department.
Well, you still have, then you have the, you have the ability now to do it.
Yes.
So, just take this councilman's request and do it. I mean, you could ask others on the Board of Transportation, you know, I know how it works. But really, it makes sense. Just throw a big E in the middle of that diamond, and maybe you've got something going there. I bet it would help, because we use the HOV. Our family uses it. We travel twice a week from downtown to the neighborhood of Cheyenne and Rancho, no, Cheyenne and Buffalo. So, we're on the 95 with two, two round trips a week. And then, every other week, I make a round trip up there to visit the golf course there. So, I, I contribute a little bit to that, just a little bit. But I'm very familiar with the traffic patterns. So, I understand exactly what Councilman Beers' frustration is. I'm glad we're ahead for a change. It is true. We were behind for many years, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Anthony.
Um, just so I'm clear on Councilman Beers' question, do, do we as a body have any say on what you're presenting here, or are you just letting us know what you're doing? I mean, can we vote to do something or no?
I, I think the intent is to, to brief you on what's going on and, and to take any comments or anything made up.
Well, I'm concerned a position, it is not agendized that way. This is a report only, so you'd have to, if that were the request, it would have to be.
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about in the future. I mean, so, so it, can we vote on, to tell you to do stuff, or is this strictly a state issue and a, and a federal government issue? Or we just let you know what we're thinking, and you kind of do what you want anyway?
Well, one thing
That's the part I just want to be clear on.
Right. One thing that's coming up is we're going to be holding a workshop sometime in February. And we're going to be inviting everybody to come in and participate. And those questions and those concerns at that time, we can, we can talk about everything and, and have better answers and, and better documentation on how we got to where we are and where we're going.
But, but you, you're only taking, you're just asking for our input. What we say doesn't, you can do whatever you want still, correct?
Well, that's
That's what, Betsy, do you know that, or?
Well, this is a report only at this point.
I know. But if we ended up putting an agenda item on to do away with HOV lanes, I mean, can we even do that?
The last, my understanding is that we can't regulate the highway system. But what I will do is get some research done, and then we'll double back in briefings and ensure that that is an accurate representation. If it's not, then there, you know, there may be further discussion to be had.
Okay. I, I would, just wasn't sure what our authority here is. So, if you're looking for comment, I don't think you should change operations of the hours. I really think those really could be Express Lanes just on I-15 until it reaches a point where you really need the capacity. And to Councilman Ross's, you know, the, it's almost impossible to enforce HOV lanes. I mean, there's only a certain number of police officers out there, and they're out there trying to reduce fatalities. And driving in the HOV lane doesn't reduce fatalities. It's kind of like voluntary compliance. You know, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to run a stop sign, not only because I can get a ticket, but because I can get hurt running a stop sign. But getting in the HOV lane by yourself is, is almost impossible. You're not going to get a ticket, because there just aren't enough police officers out there. So, it's just, it's just
Well, you could get a ticket.
It's just an interesting concept.
Well, and some of the other states have cameras on the HOV lanes, get your license plates. And at some point, as we move forward with technology, that could happen. But we don't have enough cops. This board, this group has gone ahead to be a voice for more cops. So, I understand all of this. But I think this is great. It was a great report. And hopefully, where there are open meetings, if you would make sure that the city council knows about them, so they can come in and give their input as well. And hopefully, you'll be back with the next report. And we appreciate your taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. There's a gentleman here by the name of, and I believe it's DeJoseph Peter DeJoseph. Are you here somewhere?
Yes.
Rather than have you sit here, I mean, you're welcome to stay all day with us. But I would like you to see Betsy Fretwell, our city manager, because I think this could be easily answered.
Oh.
Okay, so if you will, put your hand up to Betsy. And then, if not, you care to stay on and make some comments, you're welcome to do that at the citizen participation.
Yeah, I haven't been here before, so I'm not up to
Okay, so we're going to try and help you. So, you can go have lunch. Okay, so we are now on to a report. This is Agenda Item 46, Report by Staff Regarding the Progress of the Downtown Master Plan and Plans for the First Major Public Outreach Event Scheduled for January 29, 2015 at the Historic Fifth Street School. And we have with us our illustrious Mr. And we have with us our illustrious Mr. Adams. Morning.
Good morning. Scott Adams, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to do a brief introduction of this item so that we can put the, the downtown plan in context of all the other visioning efforts that you've got going underway in the city. If you remember, I, I stood before you several meetings ago and presented to you an overview of what we coined then were five big plans, that were five major initiatives that we are all working on, that are going to help shape the vision of the city's future. We'd like to rebrand this as City by Design. And working with our Office of Communications, we've looked at what we think would be best representative to our citizens in clearly communicating what we're trying to accomplish as a city in creating a new vision for the city's future. We think the, the term "City by Design" best does that. And, and that's what we're doing, is designing a new future for our city through each of these initiatives. So I'm going to, I, let me just mention, though, with this rebranding, we're going to be developing a website, and all of our communication going out going forward will be under the header "City by Design," so that the public understands that a small component or a piece is part of this bigger picture. And what is, what are those things that make up that bigger picture? I, I'm just kind of reiterating some of the things that I talked to you about previously, that we're embarking on a new citywide strategic plan, picking up on your council workshop from last spring, where you identified four key council priorities of economic opportunities, public safety with a focus on homelessness, education, and transportation. All four of those are, are being appointed as stakeholder groups and committees. Several of those have had meetings or will be having meetings shortly and are underway, so this is all moving forward. And if you remember, at the last council meeting, our Public Works staff presented to you the, an overview of the downtown and citywide mobility plans, so that piece fits inside this whole overall effort. And the second component is the SC2 competition, and if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, you advanced 10 finalists forward in the competition for a final cash prize for economic development initiatives, or things that would generate jobs within the community along a number of different categories, and that's moving along. Another big one is the Request for Proposal Process at Cashman Center. And that is about ready to realize some results in that on February 2nd, the deadline will, will come for receipt of proposals for those interested in developing Cashman Center, and then companion to that are occupying the Reed Whipple facility. The Medical District Master Plan is another one that's feverishly underway. This picks up on what Dean Atkinson just spoke about, where we're going to be working very hard to take the plan and that core 10-acre block area, the former Health District Site, master plan, what goes there, how that medical school can grow, and then how the rest of the medical district can grow and expand, picking up on the expansion of UMC, Valley, and other institutions within the district. So that we can demonstrate that that 200-acre existing medical district will be able to accommodate the growth, a 20- to 30-year build-out of a major academic medical center district. And then finally, that, that brings us to the subject today of a downtown plan, which is the subject today's presentation. I won't go into that. I'm going to introduce Robert Summerfield, who is a senior planner in our planning department, who is the project manager in charge of this project, will give you an overview of the downtown plan. Robert?
Thank you, Scott. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Again, for the record, Robert Summerfield with the Department of Planning. Today, I'm going to talk to you about the downtown master planning effort. And the way I like to think of this approach, we are looking to reimagine what downtown is going to be. We are looking to modernize it. You know, we've got, you've had a number of reports already today talking about improvements to the freeway system to get people in and out of downtown. You've had a number of items on your recent agendas about major projects to help stimulate not only downtown, but the region. We've talked about the medical school earlier today, which, just to remind everyone, we are looking to include the medical district, the Las Vegas Medical District, to integrate that more with our downtown. We're looking at this expand portion, where we're expanding the Centennial Plan boundaries to include the Las Vegas Medical District, to include the cultural corridor north of the 95. So we're, we're doing quite a bit of work here to just bring the downtown planning efforts further into the future. So, but before we get to the future, let's look at where we've been. So in 2000, the downtown Las Vegas Centennial Plan was adopted. The plan focused mainly on preparing downtown to celebrate Las Vegas' centennial, which occurred in 2005. By 2006, downtown development was booming. We had several high-rises either built or under construction at that point, and we had so many more entitled for downtown that, you know, truly, it would have been amazing had all of those come to fruition. However, then as we all know, as Councilman Beers pointed out, we had a significant financial recession that occurred in late 2007 and really hit us in 2008. As a part of that downturn, many of those projects that had been entitled stalled or were completely abandoned. With the move of Zappos to downtown Las Vegas and the launch of the downtown project in 2012, we've begun to see a resurgence in downtown development, but we're seeing it differently than we had during those boom years. We're seeing quite a bit of adaptive reuse, so taking some of our older buildings and reusing those, you know, using it as a theater in the Inspire Theater, putting in new restaurants and new retail opportunities in buildings that originally maybe hadn't been conceived for those types of uses. So as we move forward, we want to clearly capitalize on that new effort, that new energy that is happening downtown, which isn't necessarily centered on large-scale, high-rise development. So where are we going? So another theme that we heard this morning during the medical district presentation and, or the medical school presentation, and then during the presentation about the HOV lanes, is we're looking to the future. You know, none of these planning efforts are about tomorrow. They're about the, the future as we as a city progress and move forward. So as we're doing this downtown planning effort, we want to look 20 years in the future. What does the city of Las Vegas look like in downtown in 20 years from now? And not only what does it look like, but what are the tools that we're going to need to put in that toolbox to get us there? What are the incentives that we may be able to use? What are the development standard options that we may be able to employ through our city standards and regulations that will help incentivize developers to invest in downtown and promote downtown, not only for our commercial, but definitely for our residential, which is that next big kind of open area that we have for development within downtown? So how do we get there? What we want to do in this master planning approach is we want to focus on a comprehensive vision. One of the, I don't want to say shortcomings, but one of the things with the current Centennial Plan is the vision wasn't very comprehensive. Again, the Centennial Plan, while it's had updates in the last 15 years, did really focus the energy on the centennial, on a kind of an event. We want a more comprehensive vision for the downtown master plan as we move forward. We want to integrate a transportation plan. Again, as you heard from Mike Jensen at the last council meeting, you know, downtown is a part of a larger whole, particularly when it comes to transportation. We want to move people efficiently into and out of downtown, but then, as a part of this master planning effort, we want to also focus on how do we move people in the downtown area? How do we get people across the railroad tracks, from Symphony Park and the great things that are going on with the Smith Center and the Discovery Museum, and all the restaurants and other activities in the entertainment district that exists on this side of the, the railroad tracks? So we want a very integrated transportation plan. We want to look at the economic forecasting. We want to provide the community the best picture of how their investments can be maximized in downtown, and we want to look at what are those economic trends for downtown, and what are the tools that we can use to bend that curve line as Deputy City Manager Adams is always saying? How do we bend the trend line? How do we make those improvements for the economics of the city? And then finally, we want to recognize opportunities in this plan. One of the, the great opportunities we have for development in downtown, we have a lot of vacant land. We have huge opportunities, and we don't need to go to the high-rise level. Let's start looking at what are some mid-rise, what are some intermediate steps for development opportunities in the city to start us off, to begin that process, to become that high-rise city that we all hope to be someday? But what are some of those opportunities that we have right now for development? And then finally, one of the, the components of this is what's the feasibility for some business improvement districts? We have some sort of business improvement districts with the Fremont Street Experience and with what the Fremont East Entertainment District does, but are there other opportunities for some of our districts and areas downtown to, to sort of manage some of their own improvements that are above what the city can provide as a matter of just straight municipal services? So, so what are some options there? We want to take a look at that as a part of this process. I know this is a very difficult screen to look at in terms of the specifics, but I want to kind of show with this slide that we are in a 16-month process, and we're only in the beginning. We're only in the, at basically the third month of this process. And so over the next 13 months, we have seven significant outreach efforts that will be tied to seven deliverables that we'll be talking about. The first real deliverable will be the inventory report. That, again, because of the consultants, you know, they're, they have some local team members, but they also have some nationally recognized participants. And so one of the first things that you do in any planning effort is figure out where you're at, and what's, where you're standing, so that you can figure out where you go. So they're preparing an inventory report. They also will be working on an analysis summary report that will talk about what are some of the issues that we have that we need to address as we do a master planning effort. One of the big deliverables that we need is that vision statement, and that visioning approach that all these outreach efforts in the early going will be helping to devise. What, what's the vision that we as a community want for our downtown? Then they'll have the alternative summaries report, which will talk about some different alternative approaches that we can take as we move forward with the master planning effort, which will, of course, lead us to a preferred planning concept. And then as we move from that preferred planning concept, we'll be preparing a final report, a final plan, and then an implementation plan, because that's the key. One of the things you'd never want in planning is to work on a plan that sits on a shelf. You want that plan to be implementable, and so one of the keys for this effort is we want a plan that comes before you all for adoption, that is something that we as a city can implement. What are the goals? What are the, the options for implementation of that plan? Okay, so what have we done so far? So far, we've conducted approximately 100 stakeholder interviews, of which many of you on the council participated. In addition to council members and staff members, we also had quite a few members of the community. We had representatives from the Smith Center, from our various cultural groups up in the cultural corridor. We had residents of downtown. Believe it or not, we have residents downtown. Sometimes people don't always remember that. So we invited them to participate. We had small, medium, and large-scale business owners, property owners, developers. We had just a wide cross-section of stakeholders that were identified, that came and participated in individual and small-group interviews. And one of the things that we found is that there's a, as you would expect, there's a very wide range of sentiment that, that people have about downtown and what its future is. And so that'll be one of the things we'll be getting into as we move forward with the master planning effort. And so the very big key for, for me for this meeting is just to request that the community and what have you attend what we're calling our first major public outreach events. These will happen at the Historic Fifth Street School in the auditorium there, and they will help us shape the future of downtown Las Vegas. And so these events will be on Thursday, January 29th. They will be, we have one session in the afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00, and then we will have another session, it's the exact same workshop process that will occur from 6:30 to 8:30. This way, we can have folks that work on day shift come during the, the later program. Those that maybe work a different shift can come in the afternoon program, so that we're providing some different opportunities for the community. We're really hoping to get at least 100 participants per session to really help us start having some conversations about what we want downtown to look like, and what are some of the issues, and what are some of the, the things that we need to address as we move forward with this plan. And with that, I will take any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Summerfield. Any questions? I think it's just exciting that we're moving forward and it's being well organized. But maybe questions, anybody? No, we thank you very much. Appreciate it. And Ms. Fret, well, were you able to help Mr. DeJoseph, or does he wish to wait for the public comment at the end?
Well, Mayor, my feeling is he probably ought to put on the record his concerns. They're not issues that you can address as a legislative body here at the local level. They're related to car registration for classic cars.
Yes.
And his idea is to try and enlist your support in changing some state laws based on his ideas that he presented at the County Commission yesterday as well. So my recommendation was, is either to incorporate them into the record under the public comment. If he doesn't want to stay, he provided me a copy of them, which I can distribute to all of you, or he may choose to stay and put those comments on the record himself in person.
At the end of the city council?
During, at the end of the meeting today.
I can wait, I'm not, I'm not there.
You can wait?
Yeah, I'm not there.
Okay, fine. We'll wait for public comment, then thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 47, and this is Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Nomination of the City of Las Vegas Representative to the Advisory Council, defined in the Tulie Springs Fossil Beds National Monument Act. And is Mr. Parag, go? No?
Good morning, Mayor. I'm going to cover for Tom today. For the record, Jorge Zavant, the Executive Director for Community Development. This item, Mayor, is with the passage of the Tulie Springs National Monument Bill, the Secretary of Interior is required to establish a advisory committee. One of the members of this advisory committee is a member nominated by city council, and so this item today is for you all to nominate that person, and then we will send that nomination up to the secretary for the appointment.
And if you might respond to my question, would it not be unusual to have somebody who's been involved in getting that bill through, such as Councilman Ross, who, right there, all the way?
Certainly, Mayor. It's a discretion of the city council who already nominate, but there is some logic to that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and just move that in order to, I mean, the poor man's been having a baby over that for the past four years at least, if not longer, and so I'm going to make that, my motion is to nominate Councilman Steve Ross in Ward 6 for this position as the Representative to the Advisory Council for the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
He did, so. All those in favor? Is he allowed to vote on his?
Are you calling him a fossil, Your Honor?
You know, he's, even though he has all these grand babies.
I have a fossil.
Okay, he is a fossil. Okay. And I guess it's quiet on the doors, please post. Okay, congratulations, you are that person fossil that you are. Very well said. Okay, thank you, and we're pleased with that. Keep us posted, though, don't keep it a secret. Okay. Agenda Item Number 48, Recommending Committee. Bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2014-102. I'd like to have the bill read, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2014-102, an ordinance to update the regulations pertaining to residential parking permit zones and to authorize the use in areas where certain types of social events take place, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin, would you like to make a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move that we refer this bill to the recommending committee.
That you pass it on to recommend?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
No, this is for...
Thank you. This, I move for adoption.
Thank you.
And I'll remark on the adoption.
It's okay, what are they serving back there?
This is the beginning.
That's the second time I've asked you.
Thank you very much.
It's okay.
It's a circular argument.
It's all right, it's all right. I don't know what you're doing.
Well, the, the thing is here, we've, we've got to make a step toward helping.
Oh, wait a minute. Mayor Protem just said she thinks there might be brownies in back.
I didn't know Mary could tap dance.
Oh, my gosh. All right, there's, you made a motion.
Okay, these are non-sequencers, Your Honor, and I just wanted to say that the point of the motion is to make sure that the council understands and the public understands that we're making an attempt to start to give residential residences an ability to park their cars where they want to in their neighborhoods, despite the fact that there will be intrusions by special... by special events. And the special events we think of immediately are things like "Life is Beautiful," and over in the county, they're going to have at the venue some huge events, and people are going to park in the city, and the residents need to be prepared, and we need to have people have a privilege to park, you know, in front of their house, so that essentially, if somebody's going to take your parking space in front of your house, they might have to pay at certain times. So, that's an important thing, to try to preserve the neighborhood conveniences. So, that's the point of this bill. And so, I have moved for adoption.
Okay, would you care to, you moved it, would you care to vote on it, though? Okay, and Councilman Barlow, Councilwoman Tarkanian? And then, if you would, please post. Thank you very much. The motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 49, which is Bill Number 2015-2. Counts, could you please read the bill?
I'll be, Your Honor. Bill Number 2015-2, in ordinance to amend the zoning regulations pertaining to medical marijuana establishments, to update to clarify the permissible types of structure and co-location arrangements, and to provide for other related matters.
Councilman Coffin?
The point of this bill, Your Honor, is to correct a inconsistency between two titles in our ordinances, and that will allow then the co-location of growing, and that's cultivation, and production, or essentially, the kitchens that might be associated with medical marijuana dispensaries, to be in one location. Right now, there's a conflict in the statutes, in the ordinances. This will correct that, what is essentially a technical error, because we've done all the other work on this issue. I will now move for approval of Bill 20-2015-2.
Thank you. There's a motion, and please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item 50, Items 50. Bill Number 2015-1 will be heard at the later meeting, and we will move on to our new bills. And this is Agenda Item 51. Items 51 through 56, Bills Number 2015-3 through 2015-8, will be heard at the recommending committee on Monday, February 2nd. And if our city attorney would be happy to read the new bills, I don't see an intern or anybody. So, it's yours.
Yep, you stuck with me today. Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2015-3, in ordinance to amend ordinance Number 6381 regarding the extension of the corporate limits of the city, to correct the legal description of the annexed territory and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015-4, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, to particularly describe the line to be annexed to make and inhabit substantial laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015-5, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, to particularly describe the line to be annexed to make and inhabit substantial laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015-6, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to establish standards for animated signs containing changeable electronic messages that are located in commercial and industrial districts, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015-7, in ordinance to establish a procedure to hear appeals from city officers or employees regarding reprisals or retaliatory action for disclosing improper governmental action, and to provide for other matters. And finally, Bill Number 2015-8, in ordinance to amend code provisions regarding the activities of parking meters to authorize additional means of activation and provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills, the 2015-3 through 2015-8, are assigned to Councilman Barlow, Councilman Anthony, and myself, who will be filling in for Councilman Coffin on the second. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge. As far as I know, I'm here. I haven't missed a meeting yet, unless my staff tells me.
All right, so, unless there's an error, we will send it to Councilman Coffin, along with Councilman Anthony and Barlow, and in the event that Councilman Coffin is not there. So, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, could I just ask the question on Item Number 55? We don't have a procedure in place now at all for employees regarding reprisals or retaliatory action?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Councilwoman, we do. This is cleanup language necessary, based on some changes at the Nevada State Legislature. So, this is clarifying.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that clarifies. Okay, so we are now going to recess for lunch until 1:00. See, a whole hour and five minutes. And so, Mr. DeJoseph, have a good time during lunch. We'll see you after. Okay, okay. We're on recess to lunch now until 1:00, because that's what we have been announced on our record.
Sorry, just had a thought. I thought we were going through, that's why we're back.
We can't, it's published. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We'll reconvene our City Council meeting if everybody's signed in that lives here. One, two, three, four, five. Yes, we're in good shape. All right. Agenda Item 57. For possible action, any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Please, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Items Number 61 and 62, let me read those into the record. 61 is a major modification, a public hearing, applicant-owner, Centennial Azure, for possible action, a request for a major modification of the Town Center Land Use Plan. To amend a special land use designation. And Item Number 62, which is SDR 56653, Site Development Plan Review Related to the Major Modification at, for proposed 22,625 square-foot motor vehicle sales facility with accessory auto repair on Tenaya Way. The applicant has asked these two items be obeyed till February 18th, and that is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion on Item 61, 62, for an abeyance to February 18th. Please vote, and please post. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move now on to Agenda Item 58. Give me one second to keep up with this. Go. Okay. Items 58 and 59 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the applications recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Agenda Item 58 is EOT 57111, Extension of Time, Nonconforming Public Hearing, Applicant Owner, Alta Decatur Shopping Center, LLC, for possible action or request for an extension of time for a nonconforming-use liquor establishment tavern at 465 South Decatur, C2 General Commercial Zone in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. And Agenda Item 59, RQR 56768, Required Review, Public Hearing, Applicant Owner, She-Talk Development, for possible action or required review of an approved special-use permit, SUP 1274, for an existing 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2252 Paradise Road, C2 Commercial Zone, Ward 3, with Councilman Coffin. All items are recommended for approval by staff, and items are public hearings which I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on either of these items? If so, please come forward, state your name. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearings. Councilwoman Tarkanian, do you have a motion to approve Agenda Item 58?
Move to approve the agenda item.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Item 58. Well, I'm going to separate and I take a vote on each. So, this is for 58. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. On Agenda Item 59? Well, you can't, because we're, technology's stuck. As soon as we're...
Your Honor?
It's not coming up.
I thought that this was the one motion, one vote.
Well, it was, and it is, but I just separated them. So, anyway, do it anyway. It's not going to hurt us.
Okay.
Thank you, please, and please post. That's what Oscar said. So, how wonderful. Thank goodness there weren't 45 motions in that one motion, one vote. And this way, Councilwoman get, oh, no, she gets down once and you get down once, Councilman Coffin. See? Okay, so that wasn't too painful. Okay. So, now we'll go on to Agenda Item 60. That carried. And Agenda Item 60, SUP 55487, an abeyance item, a public hearing. Applicant, Mr. N. and S. Bonanza, LLC owner, Water Street, LLC, for possible action or request for a special-use permit for a packaged liquor off-sale used within a proposed 1,882 square-foot general retail establishment at 3595 East Bonanza Road, Suite 140, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, in Ward 3, with Councilman Coffin. The Planning Commission recommends denial. The staff recommends approval to the condition. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Are you the applicant?
Yes, I'm Luis Gutierrez, Water Street Center, 7500 West Lakeview Boulevard, Las Vegas, 89128.
A clerk? Did you get the name clearly? Okay. And do you want to tell us about this, please?
We were here a couple of times. I guess we're going to reduce it to a C-store, and I'm here to see the conditions, basically.
Okay, can we, any comments that you care to make on behalf of what the cause was at planning, for the denial and why the city feels as it does? And then, Councilman Coffin, if you would, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The planning, the, the used to be approvable in the fact that it met the distance separation. Planning Commission was concerned about the other activities in the location. You have the Regional Juvenile Justice Center just down the road. It's outside of the 400-foot separation area, but they felt it was close enough to be concerned about a packaged liquor store at this location. And I believe Councilman Coffin has some, some comments that he wants to make regarding conditions of approval, and I'll clarify if needed.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, please, Councilman Coffin.
The conditions I want to discuss with you, Mr. Diaz, is the relationship of the amount of liquor. We have agreed that you will not be opening a liquor store at this location.
Correct.
And because of the civic use that's close by, you're not near a school so much as you are youth facilities, you know, juvenile and things like that. So, we've agreed that, that a C-store with a limited amount... that a C-store with a limited amount of space for alcoholic beverages would be okay. And I think that the typical use is 10% of the square footage, which would be 180 square feet. However, I want to reduce that, and I want to know if you will agree to reduce that to a smaller, much smaller footprint, a 45 square feet of, of liquor with a one-year renewal of the looksee and essentially at the permit.
Okay.
Depending on how it's accepted there in the public, and if you don't have violations, you don't have habitual use by young people, maybe we can put that in there. And then, somebody's trying to get my attention.
Your Honor, if I might, Karen Doublestine, Deputy Director of Planning. We just need clarification if, when you say liquor, if we're including beer and wine in that 45 square feet or not.
Oh, okay, yes. Remember that everything goes up, it's the square footage of the floor, so you're not restricted in your vertical coverage.
So it's including what's in the coolers?
Well, how big, excuse me, how, how large is your beer/wine cooler that you planned?
Eighteen-door. There's an eighteen-door walk-in cooler. It's large.
Please speak up so we can hear you.
I want to know the square footage.
He's not, oh, there, he's got a mic there.
Actually, there's an eighteen-door walk-in cooler. Eighteen doors for beer and wine groceries. So that's...
Eighteen what?
Eighteen-door.
Well...
I believe he's saying eighteen doors. So from staff's clarification, what we're trying to make sure we understand is when you say packaged liquor, usually that goes on shelves. But also, in a convenience store, they have beer and wine that goes in coolers. So to understand if the 45 square feet of the floor space is a combination of beer and wine space and the packaged liquor, or if the packaged liquor's 45 square feet and there's no limit on beer and wine that can be stocked there. We just want to make sure we understand.
I think then what we could do is add to the space allowable, which would include that beverage that's contained inside the lockers, the refrigerated space. So if we increase that to 90, which is 5% of the retail space, that should give you enough space for your beer/wine and hard liquor. I'm pretty sure you can live with that. I mean, that's not your total refrigerated space. You have plenty of soft drinks and other beverages.
Just to clarify, that would be the display area, not, not the storage area inside the cooler that would count as part of this.
Well, you better explain what you mean by that, Doug, because if we don't count that...
Yeah, we don't count the, the storage area. It's just the display area.
All right.
So it would be limited to 90 square feet of display of all alcohol.
We're good, yes.
All right. That's fine. Do you agree to that?
I can live with that, yes. I, I've got some signatures. I built this building from the ground up, supporting this. I don't know if you want this for the record, or, okay.
If you've got people supporting you, that's good. There were a few objections. A lot of the initial objections had to do with the fact that you were trying to put a liquor store in there. I know you're not the proprietor, you're the owner, and you have a really nice-looking shopping center.
Thank you.
And for that, you can be congratulated. Thanks for keeping it so nice.
Okay.
And I think this will integrate into the neighborhood.
Don't go away for once.
On the one-year condition, can we clarify that?
The permission for the liquor would be for one year, and then you would report back. And of course, we would have reports on you, police reports. We would have any of those, and any violations, sale to underage, things like that, we would know about. We would certainly want you to report them, but that can happen. So I think that that's essentially it. The standard conditions would apply, just one year. And if you'd like to spell it out for the gentleman...
Absolutely, through you, Mayor. The condition would be a one-year required review as a public hearing at city council. And then the other condition would read, the total square footage of alcohol permitted would be, or permitted would be 90 square feet, including beer and wine.
And I have yet, Councilman, to close the public hearing, so I'd like to hear anyone who wishes to speak on this item or ask questions, please come forward. All right, hearing done. I'll close the public hearing and back to you, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. And having heard the agreement of the proprietor, I will move now for approval of this item, subject to the conditions as agreed upon here.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and then please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And at this point, good luck to you and Mr. Scott.
Mayor, if I could, I'm sorry. Could we, if you could recall item number 59, I'm sorry. I, I was looking through the, the documentation on the background documents. It appears that Rick Truesdale is the owner of Cheetac Development, which is the property owner for this particular site. I think in the past, you've abstained from his items since you appointed him to the planning commission as well as his wife works for you in her office.
Correct.
So if you could go back to number 59.
Okay, I'd like to recall 59 then, please, and reopen it. Do I reopen that then?
You would reopen it, and you'll need to...
And I would disclose, I had no idea that Cheetac was opened, I mean, was owned and didn't get any notification, so.
Yeah, the applicant only listed Mr. Truesdale as a, an official that may have a conflict of interest and not you.
He is my appointment to planning, as well as his wife works for me, so I will rescind my...
So if we could rescind the vote, if we could rescind the previous vote?
I will rescind the vote on that, please. So there's a motion to rescind. If you'll all please vote on that and post. And then we will hear on 59, Councilman Coffin, can you move again on this particular item, at which point I will abstain.
I will, Your Honor. This time I move for approval of RQR-5676A.
And there's a motion. Please vote, and then please post. And thank you, Mr. Scott. I had no idea, so, thank you.
The applicant should have placed both of you on his conflict list.
And in, in, without knowledge to anybody on council, how would we, aside from your wonderful eyes catching this, how would we know when it is put in for being on the agenda? Is that when we...
Yeah, there's a statement of financial interest that the applicants fill out when they actually apply for a zoning item. So they should list any persons on the council that they have a conflict with.
Okay.
In terms of financial or otherwise.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are, agenda items, that was 60, right? So 61 and 62 have been obeyed to the 18th of February. So now we're on to, okay, agenda item 66 through, 63 through 66. 63 MOD 5661, a request for a major modification of the Town Center Land Use Plan to amend the special land use designation from L-TC Low Density Residential Town Center to ML-TC Medium Low Density Residential Town Center. Agenda item 64, WVR 5662, a request for a waiver of title 19.02.140 to allow two external intersection offsets of 191 feet where 220 feet is required. Agenda item 65, SDR 5663, a request for a site development plan review for proposed 28 lot single-family residential development. And 66, TMP 5664, request for a tentative map for 28 lot single-family residential subdivision. The applicant is Richmond American Homes, the owner of Vista Verde Holdings LLC on 3.91 acres at the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and TP Lane, TC Town Center Zone, L-TC Low Density Residential Town Center Special Land Use Designation, proposed ML-TC Medium Low Density Residential Town Center. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on all items. These are in Ward 6 with Councilman Ross. Are public hearing items which I declare open. And is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. My name's Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing Richmond American Homes in this matter. This is a infill piece of property in the northwest. It's, it's about four acres of property. We're asking for a modification to the land plan to allow for medium-low density, which is immediately adjacent to us to the east. The density actually that we're, we are actually proposing is less dense than the project that's already existing to our east. Both your staff and the planning commission has recommended unanimous approval, and I'm here to answer any other questions you may have on these applications.
Any questions here? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who wishes to speak on these items? Please come forward and state your name. And my understanding is everybody recommended approval here.
Madam Mayor, that is correct. All is in order here.
Great, thank you. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor.
Didn't we hear this before?
What's that?
This area and...
No, this is actually a fabulous infill piece, so we're, we're gonna, we're just gonna move right forward with this. And Mr. Gronauer, I just want to say to you and your client that it's a pleasure working with you guys. Good to see this, this parcel be built out and, and this inventory being put on the market. But I appreciate you working all of these issues out with all of your clients long before we come to the city council meeting. So it addresses any concerns in the neighborhood. So with that, Mayor and council, I would move to follow Planning Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item 63.
Thank you. There's a motion on 63 to approve. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. And on to agenda item 64, please.
I would move to follow Planning Commission's staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please cast your vote and please post. And that motion also carries unanimously, agenda item 65.
Would also move to follow Planning Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item 65.
Thank you. There's a motion. And please vote and please post. That motion carries also unanimously, and then on agenda 66, please.
Would move to follow Planning Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item 66.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. And that motion also, thank you for the good work in helping Councilman Ross in his hearing. Appreciate it.
As always. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Bye-bye. Okay, agenda items 67 and 68. 67 VAR 55892, a request for variance to allow deviations from the street naming guidelines and street naming configuration sections of the City of Las Vegas Street Naming and Addressing Assignment Regulations 2009 Edition on Horse Drive between US 95 and Iron Mountain Road for Apache Road between US 95 and Moccasin Road, as well as on Wallaby Way from Grand Teton Drive to Moccasin Road, respectively. Agenda item 68, SNC 55060, a request for multiple street name changes from Horse Drive to West, yes, West Sky Canyon Park Drive between the US 95 and Iron Mountain Road, from Fort Apache Road to North Sky Canyon Park Drive between the US 95 and Moccasin Road, and from Wallaby Way to Sky Village Road between Grand Teton Drive and Moccasin Road. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas with a D instead of an S. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These are in Ward 6 with Councilman Ross and are public hearings which I now declare open. Is the applicant or representative
Your Honor, members, members of the council, Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing the owners of Sky Canyon Master Plan Community. We've been working in concert with the city here. This is the city's applications with, with respect to the street name changes. And we're here in support of those two applications because this is a part of us moving forward with the building of the Master Plan Community where we already have permits in process, and we're looking to rebrand the community in this area here.
Wonderful, thank you. There's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on these two items? I'll close the public hearing. Anything from staff that we need to be aware of?
Just that we support the item, and so do Planning Commission, is this creates a sense of place for this new master plan community.
Thank you. And with that, Councilman Ross?
Very exciting times, Mayor. And I know you were there for the groundbreaking, as well as some of the other council members for this project. I would ask Mr. Gronauer to put on the record who's paying for it.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we already have an agreement into the city, the city attorney's office. We are going to agree to pay for all of the fiscal costs to remove the street name changes, whatever it takes out there to fix everything. And I believe those are two conditions in there that we're agreeing to also. So we're paying for it.
And that being said, I do, I do believe there were some protest cards received on these two items, but I think that the folks who sent those didn't quite understand what was, what was happening.
Yes.
It's kind of confusing there now, anyway, because it turns into Fort Apache and, so this is really...
Everything up in the northwest, a little confusing right now.
A little confusing right now. But I'm happy to, to do what the Planning Commission staff have done, and I recommend approval of agenda item 67.
Okay, there's a motion on agenda item 67 to approve. Please vote and please post. That carries unanimously. Agenda item 68, please.
The same. I would move to follow Planning Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item 68, and look forward to working with you more, Mr. Gronauer and your client.
Thank you.
And there's a motion to approve on agenda item 68. Please vote and please post. And that also, you've had a wonderful day, two wins right back to back. Wonderful.
Thank you very much, and you guys have a good day, too. Take care.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item 69, SUP 564, 56641, public hearing applicant Yenisia Felix Rodriguez, owner Mojave Development Group, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed 2,062 square foot beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a house of worship use where 500 feet is required at 23 North Mojave Road Suite D, M Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission has no recommendation. This is a public hearing item which I declare open. Are you the applicant or representative?
I am the applicant.
And your name, please?
I was here before. My name is Yasenia Felix.
Thank you.
I don't, I have accent, but I'm gonna read the speech.
It's lovely. We can understand you fine.
Already. Dear Commissioners, my name is Yasenia Felix. I am the owner of Canelo Restaurant at 23 North Mojave Road in Las Vegas. I opened doors on January 2014. When I opened the restaurant, I did not apply for a beer and liquor license due to the expenses. After operating the restaurant for a year, I'm struggling to make ends meet. I have done a research, and I have figured out that the revenue, the revenue can increase by more than 50% if I can serve beer. When I make more money, I pay more taxes, taxes that help support my, my community. I came to America 15 years ago. Since, since I've been here, I've been able to support myself. I received my citizenship on June 2014. Okay? It is an honor to me to be a citizen of this great country. I, I have been so fortunate to open a thriving salon located in the same neighborhood as the restaurant is. I developed a clientele and a good reputation. I've been on business on my salon for eight years. Unfortunately, I spend all my money, all my profit to support the salon. I spend all my profit from the salon on the restaurant, vice versa. But my goal is to provide my family, for my family. I have two lovely daughters who understand the value of a dollar and hard work. Okay? My restaurant is located in an industrial area. The church is close to me. It's a leased property, and they may not be in that building for too much longer. Who knows? The Commissioners have freely decide that because of the church, I cannot receive this license. I have spoken with the minister and her husband, and they both support me in this decision. I have no intention to have a value, a place full of drunk people or those places with loud live music. I want a restaurant where the entire family can go. I came from, I, I come from a culture where drinking alcohol is not for getting drunk, but to enhance the dining experience. I come before you today to implore you to allow me to obtain this license, not just for myself, for my children, who will one day take over. I appreciate your support in this application. It's been hard.
Beautifully done. You did a beautiful job. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address this application? Close the public hearing and we'll hear from staff. Close the public hearing and would hear from staff on this?
Madam Mayor, staff was unable to support the request as it did require a waiver of a distance separation. The church is located on a parcel within the same shopping center, just next door, since the zero-foot separation. Planning Commission was unable to come to a majority vote, one way or the other, on this. I do note that we haven't received any opposition letters to this project as part of this application.
Have we heard anything from the minister or...
Planning Department has not heard anything officially from the church itself. It did receive... It may not have received direct notice as they're leasing the space and it only goes to the property owner, but there is a sign that's placed upon the property to notify that there's a zoning action for beer wine on sale. It's a red and white sign we place.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This... Yeah, this is not a complication for me. This is the old Oklahoma Kitchen, for those of us who've lived here a long time. We recognize that location. And so it's been a place where food has been served for many years, and we're very glad it's open again. I don't see a problem with having on-sale only beer and wine. That means no package, no taking it off the property.
No, just for the beer.
People are not allowed to take their drinks and have a good time in the parking lot. That's very important. So that they won't be mixing. And I understand the church is not concerned, and that's a good thing, so...
I understand too.
Yeah.
And I'm conscious about it.
We have not received any protests. I'm gonna move for approval of Item 69.
And Councilman, if I might add, all drinking has to take place on premise, right?
Yes, ma'am.
No, so they cannot leave with the glass?
That's what I said in my remarks.
And I'll follow all the regulations of life, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say it again, because that's what I thought I heard, but never hurts to say twice. So with that, that's your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there's a motion. On Agenda Item 69, if you would, please cast your votes and then please post. Carries unanimously.
Mayor, with your permission.
Yes, good job.
And Councilman Coffin's indulgences. Congratulations on your citizenship as well. You had to work very hard for that, as you are setting a wonderful example for your daughters. You did a wonderful job with your presentation. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Wonderful. Have a happy night.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye. Okay, Agenda Item 70, SUP 56658, public hearing, applicant G3 Labs LLC, owner Desertant Property LLC for possible action on a request for special use permit for an alternative parking standard to allow eight parking spaces where 26 spaces are required for proposed laboratory medical or demo use at 3216 and 3220 Procyon, M Industrial Zone and Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval to the conditions. It's a public hearing which I declare open and is the representative present.
We are, Your Honor. Good afternoon, Mayor. Council, for the record, Sean Fellows with the Rogich Communications Group, 11920 Southern Highlands Parkway, representing the applicant G3 Labs. I'd like to begin by thanking staff for their hard work on this issue. We support the conditions that they have imposed. We would respectfully ask that you support their recommendation for approval and Planning Commission's recommendation for approval on this item.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And Councilwoman.
Move to approve with all conditions.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. Unanimously, per...
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 71, I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from city planning commission meetings and dangerous building or nuisance litter abatement. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 72. You're still here. It's wonderful. This is citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. So we'll come forward, and I gather this is information for us and not commentary or action.
That's correct. Peter D. Joseph, North Las Vegas.
There you are. Look.
Turn it around.
No, you're good. Look.
That's my classic.
What is it?
Running around Vegas since 1974, when I was in high school in Cucamonga. My first car was a Steve McQueen Bullet look-alike, and I used to come out here and blast all over the place. So I have a pretty good appreciation for classic cars. I wanted to... As far as I know, I'm the only guy pursuing this right now, and I'm trying to elevate that a little bit, get more people involved. I'd like to first... Can I first make a couple of quick comments on the DOT and the medical school?
Okay.
The DOT, I've been... I've been a long-haul...
And also, I'm going to limit you. I'm gonna give you a little extra time, but three minutes, okay?
I've been a long-haul driver, truck driver, since 1987, on and off over the years. And I've been everywhere in the U.S. and Canada many, many times. And we have an excellent DOT here compared to other states. I just want to make sure that people understand that. And also, with the medical school, and please don't throw me out here for saying this, I find this a little funny. My daughter is currently at Columbia University working on her doctorate to be a doctor. And I asked her a couple of months ago, I called her up and I says, "Would you like to come to Vegas?"
This doesn't count, city clerk. Start it again. Go ahead. When he starts on his project cars.
I said, "Would you like to come to Nevada and finish your doctorate?" And she broke out into hysterical laughter. I'm sorry. She's in mid-20s. She thinks she knows everything, but...
Well, and the reality is, if this continues to move the direction, she may change her mind. And then she won't have any juice through you to get her in.
Right.
So anyway...
I'm just gonna review this real quickly. I'm pushing...
Single space? I did single space at the State of the City, and the governor did it too, so how long is this?
It's a rough craft, and I handwrote because I want people to know it's a rough craft.
Okay.
Yeah. Real quickly. Classic car and truck registration, Nevada must lead and surrounding states must follow. I want Nevada to be in the lead of treating people with classic cars better than everyone else around. 20 years old. If a car's 20 years or older, it's a classic vehicle, whether it's a hot rod or a custom kit car, whatever it is. 20 years is it. Keeping the rolling year rule. No emission testing. Seven-space custom plates allowed. Current plates... The current plates that are on the system, they're too small and suck. You can't have a custom plate. Carroll Shelby down there on Las Vegas Boulevard sells $180,000 Cobra. The guy can't put custom plates on his Cobra unless he takes it to the DMV and has a small check. So that's bull. Okay, and current registration and plate fees to remain with all revenue distributed equally to all 14 Nevada counties. A lot of these counties need some extra money here, and this is a way to get it to them. 5,000-mile rule out. Odometer certification out. Original parts rule out. Nevada physical address and P.O. Box mailing address allowed for all 14 counties. Cut the pollution control account to zero and distribute 1.6 million. That's what they'd say it is currently, roughly currently. Equally to all 14 counties for road improvements. Lay off all full-time staff related to air quality management. We've got another bureaucratic office here that seems to be building up and building up and adding more people in. We don't need any more bureaucrats. Big government. We don't need any more bureaucrats. Really, the massive air pollution blowing east over Nevada every day, almost every day, from California, prevents any real management enforcement. People don't realize, we're getting bombarded with air from northern... From Frisco and L.A. and San Diego. It's all blowing out here. It blows right east across us, over here, or comes down north and blows our head that way. But it's hard to manage polluted air when most of it's coming from somewhere else. So anyway. Recognize that out of the 13,000 cars in the current program, most classic cars are rarely driven and kept in the garage on a non-op secured as an investment state. Recognize that gas guzzling, pollution-spewing SUVs, vans, and pickups account for nearly half of all vehicles sold in Nevada. With pickups, the prime polluter. We all drive around town, especially... I live in the northwest. Councilman Ross, you live in the northwest. There's an abundance of big, huge quad cab, four-by-four pickup trucks running around. They're huge wheels and tires and four shocks per tire. And they can't... After they buy the truck, they can't wait to get it over there to the four-by-four shop off of Decatur and Tropicana and have all that stock stuff ripped off the truck and put this, all this other new stuff on it. And they... When you watch these guys drive, it's like a spastic, okay? They're drag racing from stoplight to stoplight. They're on your tail shine. There are lights right through your car. I mean, it's ridiculous.
So there are your three minutes?
Oh, I'm just about done.
Okay.
Okay.
And Betsy, what did you...
Uh, recognize...
What did you recommend to Mr. D. Joseph? What does he do with this?
Obviously, he's got to get a legislator to introduce legislation to help achieve what it is he's suggesting today.
Thank you.
Right. You have a lot of power and influence here. If you pick up a phone and call the power that be is up there, they'll sit up and take notice. That's why I'm here. I know that.
I have a 1990 Suburban. So mine would register, right? It's 24 years old. Is that my right hand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1990 Suburban. And that's an excellent... You know, the new technology that goes on these early 90s is far superior than what they had back in 1990.
Do you want to wrap up? I took two seconds of your time.
Okay, sure. Recognize that science and technology will solve the problem of air pollution. Right after 50% of all Nevadans quit smoking, and I don't know if it's 50%, I think it's more like 28% Nevadan smoke, but we're worried about dirty air and we've got, you know, a large population smoking here. Recognize that Barrett-Jackson, SEMA, Carroll Shelby of Las Vegas are critical to our economy. Recognize that most people who own classic cars also own new cars and trucks and pay new car sales tax, registration fees, and insurance rates. Recognize that the rich guys and gals that own classic cars here in Nevada don't like being harassed by big government and overzealous bureaucrats. Pressed hard, they will take their money, their toys, and their California polit...
Okay.
Their toys. Anyway...
I think you made your point, but you've had from our Ms. Fretwell, our city manager, recommendation. And so Councilman Coffin is gone, but Councilman Beers, do you know anybody that was at the legislature that loves classic cars?
You know, I saw him yesterday over at the county, and we chatted a little bit about the... How you go about influencing the legislature. And I'd be happy to chat with you again after the meeting here.
Yeah, and my phone number is on here if anyone wants to give me a call. I work full-time, and I don't have a lot of time to devote this. That's why I'm trying to get some help.
Yep.
I've never tried to press a bill through, but I think it really needs to be done.
Okay, and so listening to what the city manager has suggested, and if you talk with Councilman Beers, because he was up there 10 years, he knows the people, and maybe he knows somebody who really would pick that up and run with it.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you for waiting all this time.
Oh, no problem. No problem. I like it here. I might run for election, so watch out.
Go for it. Thank you. Okay, anyone else who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? We will close this citizen participation, and we will now move on to 73. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless the subject's on the agenda scheduled for action. Any member of council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, I think I started on the left last time, so we'll go to the right. Councilman Beers, you might as well take it.
Thank you, Your Honor. We will have beers with beers tomorrow night, January 22, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Bonefish Grill, which opened up last year and is a mighty fine place. 8701 West Charleston Boulevard, from 5:30 to 7:30 tomorrow night. Next coffee with the councilman, Friday, February 13, 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning at Avery's Coffee in the Village Square Shopping Center. That's at the corner of Sahara and Fort Apache. Smith's Food King is having an annual food drive for Ronald McDonald House Charities of Greater Las Vegas. On January 31, the end of the month, from 9:00 to 3:00, volunteers will hand out food drive wish lists and assist shoppers with their donations. This is the 14th year that the entire Smith's group of stores in the valley have supported the drive, which stocks the charity shelves with non-perishable and frozen food items, paper products, and cleaning supplies. rmhlv.org, if you want more information. Only one woman, only one woman, has had 100 songs on the Billboard Magazine Hot R&B Hip-Hop Songs chart. Now, it hasn't always been called that, of course, and 100 songs on that chart is a career accumulation. Dr. Aretha Franklin was inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame on this date in 1987. She received an honorary doctorate from Harvard last year. And that's all we got for Ward 2, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item to report on this today, and that is our continued relationship with Nevada Childseekers. We're missing a young lady. Her name is Shyla Jessie Belford, also known as Catalina Mara. She's 17 years old, 5'7", 130 pounds. She is from Hawaiian descent. She was last seen around West Washington and North Valley View Boulevards in the city of Las Vegas and probably wearing blue denim jeans and gray and green Adidas sweater. She may be carrying a black and brown Roxy shoulder handbag. If anyone has seen this young lady, let's get her back to where she can be cared for and taken care of. If you know where she is, please contact the Las Vegas Metro Police Department at 702-828-3111 or Nevada Childseekers, 702-458-7009. And let's get her home. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protan? Nothing. Councilwoman Tarkanian? You're not on, though. Your button.
Tomorrow evening, Thursday, January 22, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., Ward 1 will connect a meeting called Connect the Dots. It will be held in the Now Cafe, second floor of City Hall, and its purpose is to share information for neighborhood associations. We had a very good meeting like this last year. We're having another one this year. And speakers from the city will talk regarding medical marijuana and party houses, animal control, code enforcement, city apps for cell phones, and we'll give an update on the Las Vegas Medical District. I hope as many as possible can come. So far, it seems a good amount are coming. But we will then answer any other general questions that might be involved from the residents. And then Ward 1 will have a shedding event on Saturday, January 31, 10:00 to 12:00 noon at Opportunity Village, 6300 West Oakie, 89146. If you have any more shedding, we have a lot of these events. It seems, however, we keep on shedding. Not shedding, shredding. Well, I don't know. There might be some...
Shedding as well as shredding.
Shredding. Anyway, the shredding event is Saturday, January 31 at Opportunity Village. Please come. Let the youngsters help you, and let us help you by shredding your papers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. February 4 will be my next coffee with the councilman, so please come and join me for coffee and conversation to discuss or talk about anything that's on your mind or anything that you would like to find out about the city of Las Vegas or what's taking place in and around Ward 5. The time will be 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. on February 5... On February 5? Yeah, Thursday, February 5. I believe I said the 4th.
You did say the 4th, which is city council.
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. That is February 5 will be the next coffee with the councilman. And also on February 5, Doolittle Good Time Fish Fry. 50... I guess your age must be 50-plus in order to participate. This event is from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Doolittle Community Center, Senior Center, located at 1930 J Street. And it states, "Enjoy home-cooked fish like Grandma cooked down south." That sounds like some pretty good fish to me. Registration opens January 26. For more information, please call 229-6125 for advanced registration. It doesn't say how much, Mayor, but I don't qualify, so I guess I won't be there to see how tasty it is. But if you are 50, of the age 50 or more, please participate. February 10, Midday Inspirational Showcase and Soul Food Luncheon. This showcase will be for all ages, but it also states adults only, so I guess 21 and above. This will take place on Tuesday, February 10 at 11:00 a.m. There will be a showcase luncheon to follow. Advanced registration is required. So the... And also, the showcase will take place at the West Las Vegas Library Theater, located at 951 West Lake Mead Boulevard. So please come out Tuesday, February 10 at 11:00 a.m. for the Midday Inspirational Luncheon. So please come out Tuesday, February tenth at eleven a.m. for the midday inspirational showcase and soul food luncheon. The city of Las Vegas is offering many opportunities to celebrate Black History Month, including a film series, a community breakfast, youth essay contest, Taste of Soul Community Festival, Fish Fry, ball game inspirational showcase and luncheons. So for more information on Black History events that are taking place through the month of February, please visit W W W dot King Week Las Vegas dot com. That's once again, W W W dot King Week Las Vegas dot com for more information and a brochure. And of course, you may follow your councilmen on social media and I am on Facebook, Twitter, Tumblr, YouTube, you name it, trying to remain in contact and hip with the technology in the new age of communicating with the constituents and the business community in the city of Las Vegas and in particular Ward Five. So if you want more information in regards to what's happening in and around Ward Five, you can also follow, contact my office website at LasVegasNevada.gov forward slash Ward Five and you can also sign up to receive my e-newsletter, which goes out weekly to keep you abreast as to what's taking place in Ward Five and that's just through an electronic email. So please reach out to my website at LasVegasNevada.gov forward slash Ward Five. And that concludes the update from Ward Five. Mayor? Thank you.
Is the magazine GQ still in print? Is it? Yeah, you know, gentlemen, whatever it is, look at this picture.
Oh, the photo.
Wow.
Interesting enough, my wife actually picked that photo in the suit that day in tie, so I've been getting quite a few compliments, so kudos to her.
Absolutely wonderful. You're just, we're going to submit you. That's great. Okay, for me, our fabulous iconic hotel, The California, is located in downtown Maine and Ogden and it'll be celebrating its fortieth anniversary on Saturday, January thirty-first. So please join me and hopefully other council persons for cake and a toast, not cake and toast, but I don't think cake and booze go together, but anyway, cake and a toast to this amazing vintage property that blends warm hospitality, Vegas excitement and a bit of Hawaiian island fire and flair. So that's happy fortieth anniversary to Boyd Gaming's California Hotel and Casino. And again, it's at noon, Saturday, thirty-first. And then please join me for Mayor, the coffee with the mayor on February third from eight to nine-thirty in Ward Two with Councilman Beers. I hope we will be at Starbucks at the intersection of Charleston and Town Center. It's your chance to share your ideas, ask any questions you may have. That's Starbucks, I love Starbucks, at Charleston and Town Center on Tuesday, February third. And our next council meeting will be held Wednesday, February fourth at nine a.m. right here in city council. Hope you have a wonderful weekend when you get to it and it's been just a really great week, a lot of celebration, the parade, Martin Luther King Junior Parade and the celebration out, living the dream out at the Edmund Center was really terrific. So aside from the fact we had a soft opening of the historic West Side School. So anyway, until we see you again, happy trails.
Mayor, may I make a real quick disclosure? I made a mistake on the record earlier that I'd just like to clear up for the minutes, if you don't mind, before you recess.
Oh, please.
Earlier, Councilwoman asked me a question about the new ordinance that Councilman Anthony is sponsoring that's up for consideration regarding our whistleblower ordinance. I misspoke. We have been following NRS two-eight-one-six-eleven. There's a section in there that requires us to adopt an ordinance. We have not done that and we didn't realize that we hadn't done that until this year, so that's why it's coming before you now. We have been following two-eight-one and we actually had policies in place for whistleblower procedure. What your action will do, will clarify that in code as requested and outlined in NRS. So our ordinance pretty much mimics two-eight-one-six-eleven and its criteria, but I wanted to put that on the record so that there was no misunderstanding about what we're doing for future reference.
Thank you very much. Anything else from anybody? I want to thank our city staff again for everything that they did, prepare for the meeting, technology, licensing, everything and planning and everything everybody's doing. Thank you all very much and our staff, clerk's office, thank you. And with that, we are adjourned till the fourth of Fe-, no, to the fourth of February. Goodness, that seems a long way off.